Now, I'd like to call the Adam County Board Supervisor to all of us. I do the invitation. Father, we thank you in the mighty name of Jesus for another opportunity to meet Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, for carrying us through a trying year, Lord God. I thank you for your support, Lord God, and your strength as everyone has spread that for a year, Lord God. I ask that you strengthen this board, Lord God. Look on Adams County as a whole. Look on our department heads, Lord God. Look on our law enforcement, Lord God. Just look on everybody that's affiliated with Adams County. Cover every family, Lord God, that's represented here and represents through us, Lord God. Heavenly Father, we ask that you put us on one call, Lord, and deliver us through your business, Lord God. We will be pleasing in your sight, Lord God. And when it's all over, we ask that you accept our prayers in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's do prayer in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I need approval of the November minutes. Can I get a motion? Get your bag up a little bit, I'm so excited to keep moving. You need some of me before. Let me, can I do a roll call? Supervisor Gray, present. Supervisor Hudson, present. Supervisor Milton, present. Supervisor Wilson, here. Deputy Clerk Paige Dean, present. Chancery Clerk Brandon Lewis. Attorney Scott Snow, and Allen, present. All right. Now I need a motion for... Now I need a motion for approval of the November minutes. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson. It's properly settled by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion?
Yes, sir, and as President, I already talked to Ms. Dean, and I'm just going to add the necessary corrections.
All right. There'll be no more discussion. All in favor, vote by using the sign "I." In opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried unanimously. Now I need a motion for approval of the documents. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Can I get a second? It's been properly settled by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign "I." In opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried unanimously. Now I need approval of the monthly financial reports to Adams County Sheriff's Office. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Properly settled by Supervisor Hudson. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign "I." In opposed, may he have the same right. Same thing, monthly approval for the monthly report of the Chancery Clerk. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Properly settled by Supervisor Hudson. Will there be any discussion?
With the President, if I had the discussion, I don't know if I can get it out without kind of ministering.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. If there'll be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign "I." In opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried unanimously. Now I need approval for the monthly financial report for first. Will there be... It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson. Properly settled by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign "I." In opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried unanimously. All right, now we're down to special presentations. We're going to do them one at a time. Officer Paul Rose.
Would you come up? You can come up to the phone.
From the center.
Come on, Paul. This happens to be an argument quite a lot.
I'm going to read the resolution and then we'll take a picture. It's a resolution of Board of Supervisors of Adams County, Mississippi. Whereas Adams County Sheriff Deputy Corbin Paul Rose immediately responds. Captain safe the lives of wheelchair-bound woman and another resident of line twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-three. And whereas Adams County deputies are trying to put their lives on the line for the civil servant Adams County. And in the matter, Deputy Rose literally put his life under fire for the safety of others. And whereas Adams County desires to honor Corbin Paul Rose for his villainous action. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors by recognize Paul Rose for his courage. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread across the permanent minutes of the Board of Supervisor and a copy delivered to Paul Rose. So resolved is the second date of October twenty-two, three, Board of Supervisor. Warren Gaines, President. Helen Wilson, Vice President. Wes Milton, District One. Ricky Gray, District Four. And yours truly, Angela Hutchins, District Three.
Sir.
They want to cut it off.
All right, Eddie. Take your seat, Officer Wes Stroud.
Deputy Stroud, we have a resolution of the Board of Supervisors. Whereas on November twenty-first, twenty-two, three, Deputy Wes Stroud acting immediately, decisively, and courageously responded with lifesaving emergency medical treatment to a five-year-old child who tragically fell into a swimming pool in Adams County. And whereas the child had been found in the bottom of the swimming pool when Deputy Wes Stroud arrived, and the child was receiving CPR when Deputy Stroud took over and revived the child. Whereas Deputy Stroud is a deputy for the Sheriff's Department of Adams County, Mississippi, and is truly a civil servant in every name of the word. Whereas the Board Supervisor desires to recognize Deputy Wes Stroud for his courageous actions in the face of great distress. And whereas the Board of Supervisors wants a declaration throughout the county board to be known that Wes Stroud is a hero. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its heartfelt thanks to Deputy Wes Stroud for saving the life of an innocent child as well as for his dedication to this community. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread across the permanent minutes of the Board of Supervisors and a certified copy be presented to Deputy Wes Stroud. The Board of Supervisors of Adams County, Mississippi, Warren Gaines, Board President, Kevin Wilson, Vice President, myself, Wes Milton, District One, Angela Hutchins, District Three, and Ricky Gray, District Four.
I think, Paul, why don't you come up and the rest of you guys who are here to support, why don't y'all get a picture?
Ricky, you don't want to make the bar like that, Eddie.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving along, we have a special presentation. Mrs. Hidokah Erles. I'm going to do it. Like, Mr. Gray started out, Mr. Hidokah Erles I've known actually all my life. When they did the music awards to the musicians of Adams County Conference. But somehow they left him off with the city supervisor Gray talking about it. Him and myself, we went about the city and asked about it, and they looked at it, and they tried to... Somehow we got it mixed up, and we said, well, he's definitely a music legend in Adams County. I remember with my neighbor, former in-law, Little Pooch, I remember when they was traveling all over the France in my career. Yeah, they went all over the France and playing music. So I said, he's definitely one that need to be recognized. One of the only few, but some few more, but he's one of the original Adams Bottom folks that came out, that came out through some hard and struggling times and got a chance to see the world. So you know, we wanted to make sure as a county, and I think it was just a mere mistake for them, but we wanted to make sure that you get recognized today.
I just want to say, I'm not going to take the credit for that, Mr. Carrigan, and Mr. Carrigan called me, and that's how the ball got rolled, because of Mr. and Mrs. Carrigan.
And don't let me forget that, because Ms. Mayor Ann called me, and she probably seen me, and she'd get out over me if I forgive her. We made sure we did know, we appreciate that, letting you know. And I want to present it. Whereas Hidokah Erles was born on October seventh, nineteen thirty-four, on a farm in Adams Bottom, County, Mississippi. Whereas Hidokah Erles is a very talented drummer, harmonica, and vocalist whose musical career honors such accolades as being inducted into the Louisiana Folk Life Center Hall of Fame of the Massacre Art. Whereas Hidokah Erles started at home with his father's pipe and was playing with his father in a band at an age of ten. Whereas after with Hidokah, self-titled himself to harmonica, drum, guitar, and eventually was a musician for his band. The house rockers, where he published his first album since the old... Whereas Hidokah Band had gone on thirteen tours abroad, numerous jazz and blues festivals across the United States. Whereas the Board of Supervisors desires to recognize Hidokah Erles as someone's significant contributions into the social and cultural well-being of Adams County, Mississippi. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Adams County, that the resolution be spread across the permanent minutes of the Board of Supervisors to reflect the importance of Hidokah Erles to this community. Be it further resolved and proclaimed that now forevermore, October fifteenth, twenty-two, three, shall be forever known throughout Adams County as Hidokah Erles Day. So be it resolved on this fifth day of September, Supervisor, Board of Supervisors, myself, President Warren Gaines, Honorable Kevin Wilson, Vice President, Honorable Wes Milton, District One, Honorable Andrew Hutchins, District Three, and Honorable Ricky Gray, District Four.
President, I'm about to start and Mr. ... Hold on, hold on. You got it?
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say nothing about it, but this young man, he was my classmate. This class evolved nineteen what? Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Wilson, will you step out for the name of Melissa Grant, amendment update?
Good morning. After the November meeting that I attended.
Not on purpose. Hold on, hold on. Warren, is that panic button laying right there? Somebody hit that panic button? Is that it right there?
Huh? Must have hit himself by asking again, now we ain't got a panic on yet.
So I attended the meeting of November and to get a copy of the emergency medical plan regarding the landfill. Corbett had told me to took the page at the court's office, which I did. I filled out the form requesting information, and then Paige called me and told me that said to me wasting money to get a copy, that Brad Bradford said there wasn't going to be an amendment, and I didn't need a copy. So what has changed with the... You know, I thought there was a motion passed that we would be having a hearing, and I just didn't know what had changed and how that was determined.
Yeah, no motion's been before the board. There was a request to... There was a request from the letter to decide whether there was an ordinance that would escape them or not. Before the board can make any type of determination to change its solid waste plan, you would have to have an application, which there's not ever been any application before. So nothing's changed on that end.
So when you say there has to be an application, so if the company that Kevin is talking about, the plant that we're talking about, they would have to file an application requesting... Because in the meantime, I did talk to an engineering firm and spoke to an engineer, and he said that by state law, there is a county solid waste management plan required at every county in the state.
Right.
So I don't know if y'all are aware of that.
We are aware of that. We have a solid waste plan to amend that plan. Either the board would do it, or if you're a private company, you could file an application, which has not been done. What was requested was a letter stating whether there was an ordinance or a plan or not, which is not the same thing. There's a specific form that N D Q has that has not been before this board.
Okay, so that would actually be what's being amended is this solid waste...
Solid waste plan or whatever, before they could... Any type of solid waste disposal or whatever would be added.
And he also said the process was having a public hearing. And so I guess with the Democrat being the journal that does the legal postings, if that's where it would be, would be the Democrat?
They often post in the courthouse as well, and the board decided that they would make sure that y'all had notification before any other decision was being made, that y'all would be brought in and have specific notification of that.
That sounds good. I did have another question, and actually Kevin may know more about this. He had said that at one time they were burying oilfield waste at the Jefferson County landfill. Why did that even...
Why did the landfill...
No, and he just said that they weren't able to do that either, so...
Yeah, I had no idea about, be speculating.
Also, doing a little research, I did find out that... That like in Louisiana, they're actually... Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality is actually able to... I'll just read it, this is easier. Louisiana's authorized to implement and govern R C R A regulations involving hazardous and solid waste. The Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality Office of Environmental Compliance is the regulating body that carries out these responsibilities, and it ensures that any ensuing regulations are at least as stringent as those at federal level. Mississippi is not able to take care of any corrective action. They're not actually qualified to do that. And so if someone is out of compliance in Mississippi, then the EPA has to stand to step in. So I think that's what maybe is happening at the Jefferson County landfill, is they're having compliance issues, but there's no one with the state that is able to get them back in compliance.
Yeah, so the state is involved in the bankruptcy that's filed within that group and within their compliance issues? So I know that much just because awareness of the case and cost and things of that nature. So the state of N D Q is involved with that landfill and that situation.
Right.
What their hope is that the new company that's coming in is able to put money into the landfill to get it up to its compliance. I think that's their plan.
I'm hearing actually that the new company that has come in is possibly going to file a lawsuit because of a lack of information upon purchase.
I've not heard that, it's nothing that I've seen it been filed in bankruptcy.
Right. So here's my concern is that if the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality cannot make someone stay in compliance, and we're going to be depending on a federal, the EPA, it doesn't seem to be working in Jefferson County. And I'm concerned that it's not going to work here in Adams County. So I'm really, once again, really in a... And I'm asking Kevin this too. I would like there to be an industrial location for this, not out in the county next to where people live. They have water wells, they have hunting property. I don't know what that centrifuge rating is or how loud that's going to be if it runs twenty-four hours a day. But I just don't know that this is the right location. And I'm saying...
And there's been no application until there's an application form? It's really, it's all speculation? We're going to make sure that y'all are notified if there is an application involved so that these concerns can come forward. They have not filed the application at the moment.
Okay, well...
I'm not trying to brush you on it.
No, 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 I don't feel like you are. I'm just saying that I am asking Kevin to really reconsider locating this somewhere else. And just because I don't, I really don't think this is the right location. And I don't, it's across from a historic church. I don't know if they're going to be able to use their church if it is loud, if there is air pollution, if there is noise pollution. And there's a huge potential, you know, after the fact, it's really not going to matter. It's going to be too late. And I think right now is a good time to think about, let's maybe pivot and look at doing something of what has been discussed. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Mr. President, for my own personal clarification, because I'm kind of confused now with what Miss Gray was saying that she asked Paige for, and Paige said Brad said she didn't need. Could you explain what they're talking about, but I'm kind of confused? Make kind of clear where I can understand.
What she's talking about, the Adams County emergency plan. We also have a hazardous litigation plan that the county is involved with it. Some people can go through Brad's office, but if they want to just come to my office, I can give them a copy of it. I think one gentleman did, I gave him a copy of it. So, you know, they could have just came to my office, I can just give them a copy of it. Because it's all, it's nothing that's, you know, proprietary that a citizen can't read. Yeah, it's nothing private. It's just our plan to react during hazardous mitigations, phases of that nature for hazardous material in the county. We also get, all those counties that's doing any type of industrials, hazardous material, my office get tier-two reports. So we get reports on those counties, on those companies, you know, as far as anything with speed or anything like that, we get reported, and we don't get it out to the public. But we do keep maintaining in our office to make sure everything is compliant.
I guess I understand, but say that they didn't... Your office said they didn't need a copy, and you saying what you said, that you gave somebody a copy was kind of a little confusing, but you explained.
Okay. My office, yeah, my office should have never said they can't get that. I don't know...
So they want to make it plain, clear where everybody can be on the same page and understand what's going on.
And I don't think that the Chancery Clerk's office would say you can't have it over either. I don't know. The confusion is if you do a public records request, we comply with public records request. Really, really seriously when that happens.
Yeah, Paige just said she didn't want me to waste money getting a copy of it if there wasn't going to be an amendment.
Right.
And if you said there's not going to be an amendment because no application's been filed yet, I understand that. But as soon as an application is filed, then there's the process in the paper and a public hearing.
Right.
And y'all said that you're going to notify residents.
Right.
So I feel comfortable with that.
All right. All right, we thank you. Everybody's hearts and minds clear. All right, we're going to move on to Ms. David again.
It's Kevin, come on, baby.
Yeah.
You want me to wipe it for Kevin?
I'll do it. Yes.
Good to see you, Norman, and I don't forget it.
Good morning.
In September, I met with you all to offer my help with a discussion of a law enforcement judicial and then health complex. Since that time, I've had conversations with people in all those different groups, but especially Scott, who's given me a handbook from the DOJ with guidelines for developing a criminal justice coordinator committee. And this committee would have a board of directors that would be of all of those groups, and we hope to start with that in January, sometime end of January. The guidelines are very clear on who needs to be included, and this is community. And also elected officials will be on there, of course, as well. Having this committee in place, we feel will help in procuring funding, which we've already kind of heard some things on with legislators, and would help find that financial support that you need. Because with talking with all the groups, that helps them see that we're serious and mean business and looking for the future. What I want to first is to say what we're doing, and what your support. If I put out any written request to people... Um, if I put out any written, uh, request to people to be on the board and use you, I will send a letter for your approval. But, um, and if you have any names you want to be included, that would be great. Uh, and if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. You know, so you know, we appreciate the effort, just, just to kind of give me a, a little review on, on exactly what the group is, if I was understanding right, cause there's so much that went on these last couple of months. Uh, a lot of private sector, uh, business people, counterfeiters getting together and lobbying in different ways of the D O J for, to find, uh, new resources to help build a jail.
To be honest, when I looked at this, when Scott and I talked, it looked just like what I did at the chamber.
That's partially correct. You're absolutely right on that.
Correct me if so.
I'm not correcting you, I'm adding too.
Okay, add it.
It also looks at other problems with the criminal justice system that also impact funding and incarceration and so forth. For instance, pre-trial detainees, the week of stay, and things of that nature. So it's more than just looking at the facilities and improving those facilities. It does do that, but it also looks at, are we incarcerating too long for free trial? Are we getting those achieved? Are there, are there strategies we can, we can do to improve that? Are they getting the defense that they need to help them speed up? All those type of things. So it's a multi-passive work. But you were correct, I wouldn't say.
No, 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 I was, and, and I, I mean, it's been so long, cause I know this is a, uh, this is a major issue for Adams County, and I think it's a lot of concern uh, citizens, cause it was a very mixed emotion and, uh, you know, and I kinda, um, in my traveling, you hear people that, and I know it was a twenty-seven million dollar jail that we didn't, couldn't afford, but I mean, we understand that our whole justice system needs some kind of, you know, overhaul, and it don't start here just with Adams County. We noticed our state, you know, down with some things happening, and I just wanted to review myself to make sure we stay clear and maybe review some of the other people, and you know, people watch this meeting, there might be some people that's, uh, interested in, uh, taking a part. So we would just kind of reiterate what, what we're doing.
To be honest, I told Scott when I read over this report, it looked just like the Chamber of Commerce, where we had a board, but we also had three committees, or this would have three committees of the three different groups. Currently, those three don't, different groups don't meet by themselves, nor do they meet together. Is that correct, Scott?
No.
I mean, you haven't done that, so that's the first step, and we're hoping for some short-term quick results for a few things anyway, before we get to that. But no one's gonna take us seriously if we don't show that we're all communicating and on the same page, looking for the future. So that's to my grand writing back down. That's what part of that stuff.
Well, I appreciate it, and I'm gonna open up the rest of the board. Anybody have any more questions or any comment?
Well, my only comment is, um, yeah, I truly and honestly believe it. Um, I've been knowing this Debbie for a long time. Yeah, I, I feel that you got the right person on this task, but at the end of the day, uh, it's gonna take everybody in the community working together on the same accord to get anything we want in this community. Cause you know what they're saying, there's a house divided, ain't gonna stand. So as long as we together, and, and we might not agree on everything, but we all agree that we need a new judge. So, uh, thank Ms. Debbie and, and continue working, uh, gives, you're gonna get the support you need from us.
Thank you. I'd say something too, but I'm in honor too of a mighty long time, thirty years, I'd say. Well, I don't know if it's been that long, but it's been a long time. But, uh, I just wanna thank you because I know you had retired, and you've been trying to come out of your retirement to do this. So, uh, I appreciate everything you've done in the past and what you're doing now, and, uh, my supervisor Gray said you couldn't have a better person than us. Thank you.
Debbie, you already, you already got your committee set, is that?
No, we're working on that. I just wanted to let you all know where we are so that I can get a letter out. I wanted to be sure I had your approval. And, cause I'm gonna put on there that this is from you. I mean, we're working to get, I'm working for you. So I wanted to be able to know that I had your support.
Okay, thank you. Well, we thank you.
Sure.
All right. And make sure whenever something come up, you can feel free to keep us updated.
I will. I'll, I'll do that.
All right, it's Yarkay Baptiste. Uh, our design computer consultant. City government business.
Mr. President, if you wanna, uh, should we, uh, bring the board up to speed on that meeting we had with the city?
Oh, yeah, well, we had a, um, myself and, uh, I, uh, met with the city, uh, I think the board kinda remember maybe a couple of meetings ago. We, uh, I brought up Moreton Town Road, and, um, so I, I was kinda looking for alternatives, not, not stop Moreton Town Road, but you know, we lobbied since I, when I came here in twenty twenty, we had no money for Moreton Town Road. Uh, the board, uh, with lobbying and collaborative efforts, um, we got up about three point three million dollars, so, um, and the city came in, I think we got up about four point seven million, if I correct this. It's gonna be in the ballpark, not exact figures. But anyway, um, we get to the, uh, end and getting ready for to get started, utilities had not been, uh, checked. So if you see the flags on Moreton Town Road right now, you'll see water and, uh, moving and the sewers, some of the people, I'm, I'm corrected, stopping me from wrong, was the engineer. Whenever I get wrong, you stop me, correct me. Uh, the water line itself, so what made me move forward, cause they said it would probably take up to three years to move the water line, and approximately five hundred thousand dollars, uh, that needed to be moved. And I just felt like, um, the people, they suffer enough out there, and, um, we met with the city and we was all on kind of one accord to try to possible do, uh, look at, have the engineer look at where the drainage problem is, and look at it and get it overlaid and striped, so we kinda had rubber. Uh, uh, our road manager, Mr. Dollar, looked at a few figures, so they're not really, nothing concrete, so we're not gonna go into that because the engineer hasn't looked at anything unless they gonna update us, cause they met this morning at eight o'clock to go look. So that's where we at with the preliminary and, uh, probably having a catch and overlaying and striping, and do some minor drainage so we can get the water, you know, until we get, keep lobbying. Cause I feel like if it's three point three million, it's seven million now, I feel like in another three years, it'll be ten million. So that's, that's where we at on Moreton Town. Was I correct? Uh, uh, you need to speak on it, Ms. Engineer?
I was gonna say, we, uh, we met this morning, and we brought up some potential, um, you said, plan adjustments to allow us to still address drainage issue, still get road paid, and see if we allowed the fund that were available for the project. So we have some options, we have some options that are in place, that we're gonna go back and verify with our hydraulics and hydraulics team, and we'll make the modifications of plans and present it to the board at that time.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, and when they present it to the board, then we'll present it to the public. Is that fair enough? And we'll present it to the board. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, all right.
I agree, something needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Yes.
That, that throws a terrible seat.
Yes. All right, uh, so let's start with departmental reports. You don't have to be shy. You got the fight over. Let's get it rolling.
Morning, this is Mrs. Adams, Kevin. Um, we're the supervisors, purchasing department. Um, first I have, um, three quotes for the R V outlets at the Romeo window.
All right.
The first quote is for thirty-one thousand with Thorp. The second quote is thirty-three thousand five hundred with Eagle Electric. And the third quote is sixty-three thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars with, uh, James Cotton.
All right, well, I'll bring y'all up to speed. We was, uh, you know, at, at the rental, we did the upgrade, and I, it's been a while, but, uh, so election came up, stuff like that, you know, the R V club and stuff like that. So I do know it was still what was allotted. It was definitely under budget, uh, it's in the budget. So I will make a motion that we accept the law's bid and move forward. Then proper move by myself, proper second by supervisor Hudson, will it be in discussion? Yeah, be there discussion.
I, I don't have a problem with, uh, what's going on, but, um, maybe Scott can, uh, um, do you have any concrete numbers on how much money is left in the bond? I know we juggling money here and there, and, and we gonna need some additional funds to do some more stuff. I know that allowance in the bond, cause it's under budget. I read the president say that, but do we have a, a number on how much money is conversion that is left over, or do we have anything left over?
We, there were certain things set aside for, and I, you know, the last time I checked is, it was equaled or anything, it had come close to its threshold. Last time I looked at it.
I ain't gonna hold a meeting, but, uh.
I know there's a problem with this particular purpose.
No, I know that, I know that's in the budget. What I'm saying, uh, we gonna, I'm gonna need like a number where we don't go over that budget, and if we do go over that budget, we know we going over that budget. We don't need to be three, four hundred thousand dollars over the budget and getting funded out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but I will say this, uh, supervisor Gray, um, uh, I, I have a couple of projects that, uh, have been going, and, um, neither one of mine has been over budget or even at budget. So you know, probably when I finish this last bit, I probably will even have some left out of mine, so mine won't. I mean, the money that was like, not mine, but the projects that we all sheltered, it's, 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 it was, uh, it's within budget line.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Price, for, for the record, uh, I need the lowest name of the lowest bid, I think it was Eagle?
No, the lowest one was Thorp.
Thorp, okay.
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, Thorp. All right, we can proceed.
Okay. Um, Scott, if we, I know we're probably not using any of the fund money for recreation, anything else, or all we, okay. That's what I, that's what I thought, when you said juggling money, I was, you were saying that we not juggling nowhere else but for recreation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, you don't, that's a capital requirement.
That's why I said, when you said juggling money.
Let me clarify myself. Uh, what, what I meant was, to my knowledge, each recreation area had a budget that we budget to go to that area. If you spend more than what we budget for that area, that could cause some problem. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, all right.
All right. Um, I spoke with Johnny this morning and last weekend, we were talking about the boiler at the health department, and that to replace the boiler would be eighty thousand dollars. So he was talking about replacing it with units, and I have two quotes on there to replace six units. You already concluded three. The first quote is with Thorp for forty-three thousand five hundred dollars, and the second quote is with Nash's Heating and Cooling for forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. And Johnny said he spoke with everyone, um, in the budget, and they allowed money to be put into, uh, contract, other contractual services to take care of this.
All right, Scott, you know?
Well, Mr. President, uh, what, what are you asking us to do?
Okay, he wants, instead of replacing the boiler.
No, no.
No, you gotta.
Improve this.
Yes, I'm giving you the two quotes.
Pending.
Yes.
Your money being in the budget, cause we don't have no way of knowing, cause we don't have a administrator here today.
Okay, I checked, but I might not be the person, but we, we did have money to be allowed, extra money allowed in contractual services coverage. And I can pull up the amount for you.
Let's do this. Let's, let's just, let, let, let me do this.
Okay.
Let's keep everybody clear. We do this. Let me make a motion, uh, accepting the law's bid pending, uh, no, no, that's got pending that administrator, yeah, that, uh, administrator approved. Can I get a motion? If they're properly move by supervisor Hudson, and properly second by supervisor Gray, will it be in discussion?
Uh, uh, only reason I'm mentioning money, because I know we at the end of the year, and this is a time where we don't have no money, so we gotta be real, real careful, uh, of how we spending money until our money come in, when we get our tax.
Right, it's not just a, whether it's within our budget, we have a budget line out that we're under, it's also our cash flow. It's not a great, great time to be speaking.
And the law's bid was, I'm gonna indicate most, all the favor vote by you to say, I, I, in a poll, they had said right motion carried in, and the law's bid was.
Thorp, forty-three thousand five hundred.
All right, and, and Ms. Price, so I don't, I don't wanna get the same mix-up that we had last time.
No problem.
That I'm not, I, I, I wasn't calling you out or stopping it, but what, what I was trying to do is make sure that I understand you could see part of the budget, but the administrator had to see part of it. And so if we just keep everybody just kinda going down, doing their same job, we won't have any mix-up. So it wasn't anything personal, or wasn't, I don't want you to think I was trying to cut you off. I'm just trying to make clarification for the board.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No question. Thank you. All right. Oh, 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 just one, one second, I'm sorry, sir, uh, okay, y'all are computer consultants?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have five patients. Let's come on, you can come on too.
Marc, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Jay Andrew. Uh, I'm with Computer Consultants here in Nash's. Uh, we're an I T firm that's been around since nineteen eighty-six. Um, we have worked with this, the county before, and we understand that y'all are in a deficit right now in your I T department as far as staffing. Um, our company specializes in that particular niche in our area. Um, we can provide complete I T services, um, in the same capacity that you could have if you have, uh, county staff managing those positions, typically for, for a lesser amount annually, um, with the same amount of accountability and service. Um, and that's what we were coming today to talk to you about, to see if you might entertain the option of looking into that.
Well, uh, at, at President, I, I would say definitely that you will have to give some kind of, uh, financial quotes, and then we'll have to give with the, um, our, our administrator, and, and, uh, look at how the money is, and, and, uh, give with the board and see that. But I, I'm just from my standpoint, I'm gonna let the rest of the board speak for them. We would definitely need some kind of, uh, financial analysis of what it's gonna cost before we can.
And, and to that point, um, we would, before we could get into any kind of numbers, obviously, we would need to s, we would need to assess and see what your actual needs are. I mean, we are, at, at some point, we are kinda coming to this line. It's been a couple of years since we did any service directly for the county, so, um, we would definitely want to, um, i- if this is something that, that the board is interested in, we definitely would like to assess what your actual needs are so that we can give you an, an actual number, so that we're not coming back in nickel and dime and all that. We don't wanna get into all that. Uh, we, just to kind of give you a little bit more background, we currently have, we have six full-time certified I T technicians, um, that work for us right now, that would be at the county's beck and call, um, at any given point. We usually have about a ten-minute turnaround time. We're just on hollering, so it's not a big deal, um, to get here fast. Um, as far as having, they would, I guess the question was raised to me before, what about having somebody boots on the ground? That's gonna happen no matter what. That's gonna happen no matter what, just based on my experience here a couple of years ago in twenty twenty. Uh we're always gonna have to have, you're gonna have to have a tech here at some point for print problems and, and occasional computer problem, that kind of thing. So, um, just want to clarify that before, you know, we made it further, but um that's really my pitch, uh pretty simple. We, we have. I'm sorry.
So you mean somebody here. You have somebody here.
The county fully or?
Yeah.
No, we, what we would be proposing at this point would be basically completely outsourcing your IT needs. Uh and we would handle that and if, if there was anybody, I don't know, I don't know what your I, I don't know what the setup is now, if you're, if that department head has to be in attendance for reporting and that kind of thing. But we would also have the ability to provide that, you know, accountability as well.
Yes.
My, my question is like, right now, I need someone, like I'm not giving my county emails.
Right.
So if I'm up here, what's about it being to get to me right away and?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, uh so, um, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know, so what we do? Could he play the bulldog?
Well, what we need to do is give him.
The access. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, access our needs and then give us a quote. So, but we, um, do I need a mo-, do we need a motion to, well, no, 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 I ain't gonna say do we need. I want a motion to allow him to access what we need and then get back with us, give us a price. So can I get a motion? Been properly moved by supervisor Milton, properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins to allow him to access our needs and give us a price on the cost of serving as uh IT. All right, if there be no inner discussion, there be no discussion, all the favor vote by you inside, I. In a pose, may have said right motion carrying that. So if you could start assessing and uh we'll do that. All right, thank you.
Hold, hold, hold up, Mr. Scott, when you say start assessing, what, Scott, what, what is he gonna do?
No, I, I mean, you said Scott, I, we made the motion.
I know, but the motion was, but he need to do.
Right.
Uh assessment, how do that go?
I can help you with that, Mr. President. So basically what we would do is, we would, we would need to make a rounds, I guess you could say, with each department. Find out what influence they have, find out what their needs are right now, where their deficiencies are from an IT perspective. And then we can take all of that information and then compile it into a, uh, into what the cost would be annually for us to basically take over their services.
That's pretty much what I thought you had to do, so now to this board, uh, we gonna have to give with, send someone out to our department heads to let them know that he's gonna be doing what he say he's gonna be doing, because if we don't communicate right, once he walk up and somebody ask him and ask for some information and they hadn't been notified, he gonna get nothing.
Right, right. What's the timeline on the assessment?
Um, the timeline on the assessment, and of course, I'm going and I'm saying this completely blindly. I, I would say we would try to have that done before the first of the year.
Well, we just have somebody.
We're hiring.
We just hired this.
Oh, yeah?
No.
We wait until we get this done.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, there's something you could do in a week or, or so, because we, we kind of.
Uh, yeah, I understand, I understand the crunch, absolutely, yes, we could do that.
Or, or.
Actually, I got computers.
I mean, is there, is there something we could do in the meantime where they could fill some of these calls we may have through the problem, just to get it through?
Yeah, we could definitely work something out on hourly basis until, until that comes.
On a temporary basis.
Yeah.
We, we need to.
Because it's gonna be just nitpicky stuff.
Probably would match pretty much for, because we definitely need, uh, we need our, uh, financial question, so we can see how much and stuff like this, so I don't know.
Well, it'd help you with your assessment if you're doing day-to-days over the next week or so.
Absolutely, because we'll, we'll become more intimate with what those departments, you know.
We won't even charge you for uh figuring out how much it's gonna cost us. You know what you do, please.
All right, so I, no, so what's the business of it?
So, Scott, do you think we can make a motion, uh, that we can let them kind of assess and, and kind of go through the motions actually being IT people for about a week or so? Or, and, or, or the next, what do you say, until?
Okay, well, we already ordered the assessment, but you also want them to be able to serve our computer needs.
Now, could we, we talking, because I know you here with financial, I'm definitely talking from a financial staff to see exactly where we gonna be on that. So what?
Well, we have two vacant positions at the time, so we should be.
Well, you would already be doing it since we don't have that information properly before, since we can, they can use it up to what we have allocated.
Okay, okay, yeah.
On pro rata, share, share. Pro have a share for the, for the month.
All right, so what would be the present for, can I get a?
Motion.
Yes, I need a motion. To allow them to start, uh, going.
Providing IT services until they reach the amount budgeted per share. Budgeted for our staff.
If you exceed that work, then you don't get paid.
And. And, and with a session, you get.
Let me get a clear understanding of what the motion is, let, let me come from one person, we can get this motion.
Well, I was trying to get a clear motion to clarify that, so let me ask for this motion. To hire them, first, the first part of the motion, what we just, I asked, is to allow them to give us an assessment. All right, and the second part of the motion, supervisor Gray, is to allow them to do our IT work up to the threshold of, of the two salaries that we have, not, well, I ain't gonna say, make, not exceeding the money that we have in budget for IT for the month of December.
So.
Well, Mr. Gray, he ain't stretching it. As I said, he not stretching it, we need it.
I understand what you're saying, I understand why we doing it to give anybody the capacity to go all the way up to. I tell you, man, we ain't even gonna take that.
No.
Just don't go over that, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, that's it.
He saying no, he saying yeah.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Okay, that's, that's what you.
But you can give us a weekly accounting of what.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we.
No, he said, that's what I'm saying, he said not to exceed, yes. All right.
We're talking about a week, so it's probably not gonna happen that we would exceed what y'all.
Oh, no. So I'm not sure if we know if we see that a week, we might just have to pay for a month. It ain't hard for us to figure out. Uh, so can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton.
Second.
Properly settled by supervisor, uh, Wilson, will it be in discussion? There be no discussion, all the favor vote by you inside, I, in a pose, may have said right motion carrying that. I have to pass together for three minutes, I already talked to the board, have a ten clock, uh, be right back.
Do, do, but I did, I do have one question in regards to that.
Okay.
Who would prioritize where we need to address issues? Like if it's the eye point of contact.
Yeah, there's.
Or Scott.
Randy Lewis would have to get you.
Work orders and so forth. Right now on a work order system, so.
I, yeah, I was gonna ask, do we need to recess, because we don't have a county administrator. Now we got the president and another board member going and ain't gonna take for fifteen to thirty minutes. Maybe we need to recess and, and, and wait till they come back.
I'd, I'd like to go through the, uh, departmental report, because that's all we're gonna do right now. Most of that is just these guys. And if we get into something, we gotta pass on, we'll pass.
You can make a motion if that's the recess until thirty minutes.
It shouldn't be fifteen minutes, so.
I, I would like to make a motion to recess at fifteen.
It's been properly moved by supervisor Gray to make a motion to recess, but what?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. And seconded by supervisor Milton, will it be in discussion? There be no discussion, all the favor vote by you inside, I, in a pose, may have said right, recess, twenty minutes. I'd like to call advocate for supervisor, thank you, order. Move one, Mr. Bill.
You're on.
You can do that.
Okay, I submitted to attorney's lawyer earlier, I think it was, it should have been passed around, it should say adult court, four, one, one, eight. I just wanted to report to the board that the October uh reimbursement check uh received, the amount requested, ten thousand one eight seven ninety-five.
Okay.
Did you get it?
Yes, everything that's, everything that's, uh, where it's not requested, all those numbers, you go them all the way down, start in March, it's all been reimbursed.
It's in the right account.
All right, it was delivered to, it was delivered to Renee and told her it was for the one, one eighteen, uh, reimbursement, so.
All right, but we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Rick, bringing up the middle of the street report, uh, I also have my little expense pass around as well for, for our budget. We received sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents of the month of October, still waiting on, on November. But I know we can call to, uh, find you to hurry this up, that should be coming soon. Any questions?
All right, but we thank you, just make sure you keep doing what you're doing, feel really good. Um, and I appreciate that as one board member, I'm pretty much sure the rest of you too. A lot of time you'll come and ask and, um, we approve things and go ahead and move forward, but we never hear when it come back. And so with us trying to do a better job of keeping track of what's going on, it's really important, it means a lot to me for y'all to come in and let, 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 inform the board that, that money's being returned back.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, one more thing I have is contractual services with Jefferson Comprehensive, uh, on Homochino Street. Uh, one of the departments of our mental health treatment court is they receive a physical health assessment before coming to the program, so we have to give, uh, contractual services. And that's, it's very simple, just one page, second page is significant.
So when that Scott has looked over, I do have it in my hand, uh, so Scott, uh, the trainer has looked over it. So what, what's the clear to the board, can you get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton, properly settled by supervisor Wilson, will that be in discussion? There be no discussion, all the favor vote by you inside, I, I, in a pose, may have said right, motion carrying that.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mary Kay Dory, I'm from the heat court. Um, all I have today to present, I have a request to, um, hire a new cost of director. You should have all the paperwork in your folder. All of her background checks come in.
You never hired anyone?
Pardon?
You had, you never hired anyone?
Not since Fran left, we had Angela James, she left, then we had Fran Gomines for a little while.
So she left.
And she left to go across the street to mental health court.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, it's been making about three months.
Okay.
Uh, but we have someone, Kristy Castle, who's been gone through all the steps.
All right, uh, I do have a necessary paperwork, uh, I already sixteen dollars, fourteen cents an hour. Thirty-three, five, seven, one, twenty yearly, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton, properly settled by supervisor Hutchins, will it be in a discussion? Her name is, uh.
Kristy Castle.
There be no discussion, all the favor vote by you inside, I, I, in a pose, may have said right, motion carrying that.
That's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, boy. Just got a couple of things, first of all, I want to thank, uh, my staff and the road department for the last, uh, severe weather we had, uh, last board meeting. And, uh, we hadn't had bad weather in a long time, so we was a little rested. And, uh, but, you know, uh, we came together, we was able to get roads back open and things like that, thank God that, you know, didn't have touchdown in North Adams County. All of that, so like I say, want to thank all the citizens for ban, uh, with the sirens. Uh, there are a lot of people calling the road sirens off, but, you know, we interact with people, as long as they have a tornado born in the county, we have to keep them off. Uh, because like I say, you, you know, it may not be in your area, but people may be traveling more, people know, hey, it's a tornado, it may be on the ground, so let's keep it safe. So we want to thank everybody, you know, uh, all the county workers that came out of that. Um, the, I know we talked about it before, we gonna need a long-term recovery committee in this county. Uh, I know I brought this for the board probably during the hurricanes, ice storm, where we may not get a declaration, but a lot of people that don't have insurance, they have damage to the houses and stuff, there is state money that's available, but it has to go through a long-term recovery committee, nonprofit, five oh one C three. Uh, Catholic charity did for us last time, uh, but we need to either try to form one ourselves, uh, that's gonna be a discrepancy supervisor, we want to put a board together. Or do we want to find a already established five oh one C three to have them represent us, represent you guys as a long-term recovery committee, because there is some training on that. Uh, the benefit of it is, if you have any houses, uh, constituents that may not have any insurance, they get any kind of wind damage or something like that, and we don't qualify for a declaration, that money can go toward repairing roofs, uh, but it don't have no administrative fees or nothing like that, that's free money that we get. County got to put that out, we just gotta make sure all the paperwork is done correctly, sent back to the state. Uh, so we, let's try to, do we want to form a board, do we want to research, try to find a five oh one C three, uh, to try to help us out with that?
All right, what's the clear to the board, you heard, uh, the question was from Mr. Brassa. Uh, I'm opening the floor to suggestions and ideas.
Uh, Mr. President.
And recommendations also.
Mr. President, uh, Catholic charity don't want to do it?
Well, they, they, they did it for us the last time out of, you know, I, they act, because we need, we had the money we needed to spend. So they stepped in and did it, but they don't want it, because they got their own, you know, base that they deal with, with helping people like that. So that's why I said we try to find another one, uh, somebody that's local that can manage that, that money's what we get.
Well, uh, could you try to find one locally before we try to create some, because that, that mean it gonna have to be a LLC, right?
Yeah, it have to be, yeah, it gotta, gotta be in good standard with the state and all that. So that's why I'm saying, do we want to go and research and try to find one? Or do we want each, uh, supervisor nominate a person from their district? I know it's hard to find them, but I don't.
The county itself can't create.
We can't create one.
Yeah, we, I'm saying, we could, we could create it, but then the, each supervisor can nominate somebody from their district to volunteer for it. If y'all want to go that route, just try to find somebody already established.
I think we need to try to find somebody that's already established, because if we create, we gonna have to put people on the board that's familiar with, uh, nonprofits and everybody is not familiar with how nonprofits work. So if you can't find nobody in the community that want to, uh, help us out, then the last option, I guess, would be.
Yeah. Okay, so I just need the motion to look for a nonprofit, and I bring probably three back, for y'all to look at.
No more. It's been a motion made by supervisor Gray, and a motion seconded by supervisor Hutchins to, uh, allow, uh, Mr. Brassa to look for a nonprofit, uh, to co- as in, uh.
Long-term recovery.
Long-term recovery. All right. In discussion.
Yeah, President Gray, do you have a list last time of, uh, some of the nonprofit people that, you know, submitted last time?
Yeah, I can get those from the secretary of state, they normally have a list of all the boards that's in the, in the county that's up with good standards, we reach out to them. If y'all want to do top three and let y'all pick from those, how y'all want to do it. But I would like to say, I don't want to probably bring everybody here to board. You know, we'll try to get the top three and I'll bring it to y'all, but y'all make a decision afterwards.
All right, if there be no more discussion, all the favor vote by you inside, I, in a pose, may have said right, motion carrying that.
Uh, also at the sanctuary, I know Johnny, we was talking about getting some more lighting at the sanctuary over there, uh, putting up some poles, uh, to, to light the, uh, the parking lot, because the ones we got on the building, we did change those out. Uh, also at the sanctuary, I know, John, we was talking about getting some more lighting at the sanctuary over there, uh, putting up some poles, uh, to, to light the, uh, the parking lot, because the ones we got on the building, we did change those out. But it's still some dark spots, uh, over there in the safe room, you know, we have people coming to that parking lot, that fence, so we want to make sure we get it light, but John is supposed to work on that. To try and get three lights, like we did in project, go hit Sheriff Hoffman, get those directional phase of light, so once he get that, then everybody for the board, if it's on cops, he's gonna do that.
Alright, appreciate it.
Uh, the next thing, last thing I got is, I know the board, we, y'all voted, uh, for a green tree to build the disaster, uh, debris removal contract. I just asked that Scott, I know they want to do a contract for the debris removal. I asked that we get more information from them, because they were the only company that didn't send any of their schematics, their cake builders. So we kind of really in blind with them, they didn't have, they didn't let us know if they had equipment or nothing like that, they just did the bare minimum. They just sent us what they were charged, so we don't know if they got equipment or what, before I could board make a final decision with that, so my.
No, I'm gonna ask anyway, so my, my question is, so when, when we have recommendations or something like that, I thought, when we put out something, everybody have certain qualifications there. So, so when we do pick, cause we picked lowest or best bid, cause I do understand, I've had some bids since I've been here, they four years lowest, they always been best. But I, I mean, unless I'm understanding wrong, when we usually pick people, it's always apples to apples, we don't, uh, we have same qualification. And everybody should meet the same qualification before we take the lowest bid, uh, did I miss something?
Well, they, they did, but most, most of your experience companies, they don't see in your data sheet of what they got, their cake builders to make you, to have your decisions made based off their numbers. This company did, they just sent five dollars as a lowest bid, and that was kind of sketchy to me, because the average is like nine dollars. And this company is out in North Carolina, and I have no, I've never worked with them, none of my year maybe, really never worked with them, so I, I just don't want the county going in blind with a company that we don't know nothing about.
No.
Because they were the lowest bid.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate it, but you know, that's what was, no, that, that was my question, before we went blind and accepted the contract, you know, I was under the impression that when we asked for a degree, uh, company, when they came in. That it's certain qualification that they was looking for, and everybody fit, uh, that we looked at and chose, we chose a company that had, that fitted the qualification that we had. But I do understand your point, so what you want to do, they fit the qualification, basically you just want to get, say, hey, send me some information, send me some facts on your experience, send me some work in history, is that what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
Alright, now it's clear.
Mr. President, since that, that contract, we weren't agreeing to pay him or do any services or whatever, it's just a preliminary contract. So I would encourage Brad, if he's not comfortable with it, inquire to them, get the information that you need, uh, because we don't have to send them a bit of service, we can still.
Right.
Do what we need to anyway, so go ahead and do the investigation, so if an emergency does happen, you feel confident that this is a good company to use, that's what I would encourage Brad to go ahead and do.
Yeah, I, I, I know they, they was asking for it, going to do a contract, so I've been hoping that we don't need to do a contract with that.
Let me ask a question, and I guess it shouldn't even make a difference, did anybody else closely submit anything?
Yeah, all the great companies, they, you go, mostly they need debris, they run around nine dollars a.
I hate to talk about location.
Location wise.
Yeah.
How much is it gonna cost for somebody from North Carolina to get equipment down here in Adam County versus somebody? Not local.
Local, but close.
Even in the state of Mississippi?
Right, yeah, and that's one reason they got to read for North Carolina, I mean, uh.
During an emergency, no?
Can't go for that, huh?
During an emergency, no?
Right.
So, I would tell Brad to go ahead and do his, do his due diligence, you know, because we don't want to.
So they start up coming, trying to, uh, start up and if an emergency happened, then they go purchase some equipment, and then they come down here and take their help, I guess.
Well, I, I just didn't want, because the only way it works is, the county, we have to pay them first, then we submit this to get reimbursed. We don't need to have a company that don't know how to do it, and we submit our reimbursement, FEMA don't pay it, and the county stuck with the bill, we have to pay them, legally we have to pay them. So I want to make sure that they got the equipment, they done this before, as a matter of fact, I mean, even been in Mississippi, so we just need to do some homework on it before the board signs this contract.
So, Mr. Brassa, would you do that, take the feeling, doing that, uh, homework for me, and I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, Mr. Supervisor Wilson.
I was gonna say, I asked, did that have to be approved by FEMA ahead of time, or, or does FEMA have any sort of lift?
No, okay, they, they, normally that's up to the county, because FEMA don't do that, that'd be like, if they pick somebody for you, that's, you know, I guess it's like they can't pay them a reimbursement for it. So if they stay out, they leave it up to the local supervisors.
FEMA says, this is the, this is the criteria of how, or this is how you pick a professional, you have to go through these things, and you can do that before an emergency, and just have it when you need it. Or, but it doesn't, but you don't have to use them.
Right.
You can still go through the procurement process again, if you needed to, so that's why I tell, I'm just saying, Brad, go ahead, look at, if he doesn't feel comfortable to report back to us, we don't have to use it.
Yeah, so what this does is, that speeds up, normally you have to post like thirty days, but you want somebody on the ground before thirty days to help out with the road, start getting a degree out of it.
Addison's never.
Yeah, so I, I can, I can go and do a research on it, bring it back to the board, if we want to continue to do it before we do an agreement.
So they, Mr. President, so they, do they have to have references?
Well, I'm saying, if you don't ask for it, they don't.
So that's kind of like, I don't know about being too, because we should've had a package together, asking for everything that we want, including references.
No, what I'm saying is, most people that justice, they send out, they know what you, what the supervisor looking for, they are, this the only company that didn't send.
In over package, they need to have reference and who.
I said correct that, I said correct that, uh, supervisor Gray, we accepted that, we sent a package, Miss Price, if I'm not mistaken, Miss Price, and, and our board meeting, and read everything off. And when we accepted, so we, we wasn't in the blind.
Yeah, they met the, they met.
They met, quite there, she read them off in the boardroom.
And they had references?
She had, and am I correct with the name?
Yes, we, we showed the requirements, but only thing that they were required to, make sure they meet those requirements, but the only thing they were required to provide us was the bid of per cubic yard. So I stated what the requirements are, people read those requirements, and then they bid on it, so when they bid on it, they're stating that they meet those requirements. Now, the, they were the only ones that did not submit a pack showing, all the other companies submitted a package showing their requirement, showing that they meet all the requirements. But keep in mind, the only requirement we had was to meet that as far as this trip, the cubic yards, they sent us that sheet, but they supposed to know that they already meet those requirements when I put it in the ad.
So, Mr. President, let me ask you a question, uh, we done had it presented before, right? And we sent out the same requirements we sent out then, and we sent out this one?
Well, mo- mostly, what I'm saying is, the generic one we sent out this time were just for specific on the debris, uh, removal, and also the, uh, monitoring. Most companies that does this, that's worked with Mississippi, they know what the supervisor need, they send additional stuff to offset, if they say they charge you nine dollars or such and such, they gonna put in their package what dump trucks they got. I only work, this company didn't do this, so only thing we got was just a sheet saying, they only go charge us five dollars, so we don't know if they got dump trucks, we don't know what kind of experience they got, they didn't, they, they don't have to, that's why I'm asking to request that information.
And I appreciate it, but, but I, I appreciate it, because simply what you doing is looking at, and I understand, I think, I'm, I'm trying to understand where everybody coming from, so we can move forward with this right here. Because what, what happened in, when we accepted the bid, basically what I'm, what I'm kind of hearing right now, when it, when it came in, before we accepted the bid. We probably should've investigated and looked at, cause they didn't have a package to see what they, they was lowest, or was they the best bid. So the good part about the county, I don't, I don't have nothing, we didn't accept it to be, you gonna do the homework, so it's nobody's fault, and we hadn't had any material then. So if you go ahead and do the investigation, and they don't, uh, meet the qualifications, then we can move forward before something happen, am I correct, does that clarify everybody?
Right, and that's what I did, we, I think we looked at the package.
Am I ready to clear it? Alright, well, alright, so we, you got to throw it to, that's it?
That's it.
Thank you, next.
Morning.
Good morning.
Fire court leader. Uh, I was having to come and explain about the rural fire truck acquisition program, I think it's kind of wanted to use that, and what it, what it is is, uh. You got different rounds, for say, one, four through six, you stay with these like sixty thousand dollars, round seven through eleven, seventy thousand, round twelve through fif- fifteen, ninety thousand dollars. And each round is pretty much talking about a truck, so round four, talking about four trucks, talking about four trucks. Now, but Brad Smith with the fire marshal office and insurance, no, they suggested if we was do the, uh, use program, then we go skip up to the twelfth round, which is ninety thousand dollars. I mean, the county, I mean, state would give it up, we had to match the rest of it, now. What the city was having, cause they using that, you ever had to be, you had to approve that, and the county wouldn't be, all you do is say they can use the, the grant, but they have to pay the rest of it. But, now like I told the chief, I can go back and kind of do some background, or to talk to people about it also, you know, to make sure we won't be held, you know, accountable for anything, which we won't, but. Talked to few fire coordinators that had done the, uh, rural fire truck program, no, county won't get anything out of it. And just like they trying to get a truck, we need trucks too, I mean, we down to look at trucks and make it to a scene pretty much almost. And, you know, if we was letting you use it, and I don't know, would that stop us from using it either, they said it wouldn't, but like I say, I want to take that chance, we get a truck over there, and we need a new truck. We can't use, use, uh, grant.
How long is that grant open?
Uh, I had to close, it doesn't matter what you putting in for.
How long is it viable, though?
Uh, well, they're like pretty much trying to buy into a truck, and what they do, they'll give you money to put down on it. Then you have to go through all the paperwork and all that, or buy, or purchase the truck and all that, and you just have to match the rest of it, so.
When you say match the rest of, this, you said they're gonna give you ninety thousand?
Yes, they give you ninety-five.
Okay, if you buy a ninety-five thousand dollar truck, we, we pay five thousand.
I guess, I guess that's what they talking about. But what I'm looking at, like I said, before we do anything, anything about it, we should look at taking care of, take care of us.
Mr. Smith, I want to say this as the president, I want to speak for this supervisor, I ain't gonna speak for nobody at this table, I, I don't really care for, uh, fault for me. I don't really care what you hear in the street, or what's the rumor, or what somebody at, but what I do need to do is, when you come, be like, already did your research and look at what's there, because, I, I mean, I kind of heard something, not, not fault you. Not saying nothing there, but I mean, I, I kind of heard something out there about it, but it's still, I can make a clear decision right now, because I heard you say, that you gotta go research something, you got to look at something.
Yeah, I see, I see, I saw the fire coordinator about it.
So, why don't you do this, why don't you do your homework for me, now, I'm, I'm gonna let the rest of the board speak, but for me, would you just go ahead and look at, talk to your other fire coordinators, look at your other county. And then we can have, um, a good recommendation, something that, so concrete fact, so before we do this, so when I get ready to make my decision, you know what I'm saying? It'll be all facts of what the went on, how this work like that, instead of just saying like, you know, like you say, well, you might need something, I need to know what the county need before I give it to the city. Now that I'm not trying to work with the city, I need to know what we can do, uh, if we applying for it.
No, we won't be applying for it, they will have to apply for it.
Okay.
You just have to give them permission to use it.
That's what I'm saying.
That ain't what you saying, you saying, if we want to apply.
That's what I'm saying, cause, cause you kept saying, I, cause that's why, see, I don't have to, maybe somebody said, we apply for it, then we need to let the city use, so it's not even, that's not, see, that, that's not even after, you said, if the city want, the city have to apply for it.
Well, they, they have to come and ask, and you have to give them permission to use it.
But what I'm hearing you saying, that before we do that, you might have needs that you need, that could use it on the county side, am I not, that, that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because like I say, I wait to.
Yeah.
Give somebody something then.
So, let's just kind of do a assessment, I'm, I'm gonna see how the rest of the board feels.
Mr. President, let me ask you a question. Is this a yearly grant, uh, uh, every five-year grant, uh, how do that work?
It's just like you applying for the trucks, and you get, call the state, and you gotta go through the steps.
Is every year, or every other year?
Every, yes, depending on the truck you want, each round is, uh, for what I can control.
Wait, 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 one thing at a time, so is this grant coming every year?
Yeah, let me open it, but you gotta apply for it.
Is it coming every year?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a yes or no, okay.
I tell you what.
Oh, 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 we not gonna use it this year, right?
No, we ain't made it to.
So we not gonna be able to use the grant, so the city is gonna use it this year, because they want to use it, and we not gonna use it. So, to me, if we not gonna use it, and they want to use it, and they got their match money, then I don't see a problem with it. So my next question is, if they use it this year, in a year or two, can we turn around and use it ourselves, when we more, when we got money to do the matching and all that?
But that's what I was trying to ask, the people I was talking to, and they didn't give me that answer, I know I asked Brad Smith about it, and this what he said to me about the rounds and all that, so, but I know, uh.
Do you know anything about this?
Me?
Yes.
How do you know?
Okay, well, I think you need to do it, the super, the president said, go find the information out, and, and if it's a yearly grant, or if it's a, every three-year grant, that needs to be established first. Cause if it's a year, yearly grant, we not gonna use it this year, we could allow them to use it, but if it's every five years, and we got needs ourselves, then we ain't gonna be able to do that. But I, I think it might be a yearly grant, do you know, sir?
Are these used trucks or new trucks?
Uh, the new.
That's a truck to be three or four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can get three or four hundred thousand.
No, we not.
Yeah, you ought to give that to the city, I know we don't have that kind of.
That's what I tried to establish, if we put it on you, because we didn't have the money and that. So, since we not gonna use it, and we gonna allow the city use it, Mr. Legaman, uh, we need to make a motion to do what?
Before we make a motion on anything, before he make any motion on anything, I, I, I said, let Dad go get some information before we make any, before we make any motion. But I mean, I ain't gonna say that, because I can't control when you make a motion, you can make a motion, but I, 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 I suggest that Dad go get the information. And then we do it, either no, either, but either you can.
He got this, he's got a deadline on the grant.
Or the no-no.
That's why I said we got, we don't have.
My question is, what's deadline, information, all that is, needs to be established before we do anything, because we cannot sit up and make a motion, or even, you know, carry one, because we need to know if there's a deadline. We know we don't need it this year.
No, 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 let's get that straight, we can't afford it.
We can't afford it.
We need it.
We need it, but we can't afford it, our budget don't allow us to, uh, afford something like that this year, we really on a budget constraint, we just can't afford to do it.
Also, you gotta look at also, is, uh, the agreement has to be signed, and that's why I told you, you probably can get that agreement signed, because they can't use it if they not responding to the county.
But still, we need all that information before we even sign an agreement, you got, you got to bring us back some information.
Alright. And the most, I think the most important question about all of this is, the frequency of applications, if you apply this year, and you are awarded this grant, is there a timeframe before you can reapply? If it's five years, another. The frequency of what you, how often you can apply for it.
All right, so, like I said, I talked, I know a few fire coordinators that have been through it, not too many have. But I know some that have, I talked to them.
And I just, the deadline, the, 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 the deadline is this year. And we not gonna use it, then we need to have a special call, we need to come back up in here to allow the city to use the, uh, grant that we not gonna use because we can't afford to use. Thank you.
All right, and also, just kind of don't put the bug in here on this, and just kind of, you know, I kind of bring up the, uh, rebate money. I know every time I bring it up, the military officer is in budget. Now, every year, we do paperwork on rebate. And that's pretty much based on the county and city's population. City get rebate funds, and we get rebate funds. And from two thousand and twenty until now, we pretty much got three hundred some thousand dollars. And the city, they got about the same. So, in twenty, we got ninety, ninety thousand dollars. Uh, city, we got ninety-two. Twenty-one, ninety-two, ninety-two, I'm just giving you, round it off, ninety-two. City got eighty-seven. Twenty-two, ninety-six. And, uh, city got ninety-one. This year, they combined the code money and rebate money, we got a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Round off, a hundred and nine thousand dollars. And the city got ninety-three. And that's why I keep asking, we need to keep rebate, hold on, because if, if budget didn't go into the city, and they doubled enough, and they pretty much, in four years, that's over seven hundred some thousand dollars, which is a fire truck.
So, what do we do with our rebate? If we give it all to the city, then why we don't keep it?
We should. That, that's what I've been saying, we should keep because that, that money there. We can buy equipment and whatever, that's dealing with fire.
We paying the city?
If, if, if some, I, I, I don't want, I would, this, this came up the last couple of years I've been here. If I'm not mistaken, well, I can't really answer the administrator, but I remember, but I know it came up, I think it came up when Joe was here, also came up when Andy was here. This money was, uh, you know, we paid the city for, um, for answering county fire truck. You know, back twenty-twenty, when I came in, one of the things that I was trying to do, and I asked about, is getting the rural, uh, uh, rural fire stations. And that's something that kind of, we kind of went off of, uh, to use that money. But I, I'm gonna let the administrator speak, but I do remember some of that. I think we paid the city seven hundred some thousand dollars, um, for fire protection, that right guy.
That's right.
And so, uh, that money was there, and so that was using to help pay for them covering. But, but one of the options was is taking some of that money, and we had talked about it, locating the, a fire, uh, uh, I think a fire station, maybe somewhere like Fosse Line or somewhere. Uh, I want to say Kingston, I can't remember exactly, but I know the one on the north end was there. They trying to help the fire insurance go down, but somewhere down there, they fell through the gap. But the city, cause if you spread fire stations out, if I'm remembering right, if you spread them out, the quicker response time, and that'll make the insurance go down for the, uh, peoples in the, in the county. But at that point, um, we didn't move forward, uh, it wasn't feasible for us to move forward on it. And that rebate money was going to help, uh, the city with covering the fire protection. So, I think that's something that, uh, we got a legitimate point. And I understand what you're saying, and I think we need to do, look at those options, but, you know, uh, look at some other options on it. Yes.
As the board has previously adopted the policy, if you're, right now, there's nothing budgeted to use that money for what he's talking about. And so, the appropriate thing to do is say, here's our budget request amendment form, no matter what. And that, that way, the administrator will be able to pull the budget, see if the money's already being spent and whatnot, because we're not sure. I, you know, I know we use all of our money we can to make ends meet, but is that money allocated to this, that, or the other? You know, and probably is, but if not, then, then that's something that could be.
Yeah, cause like I said, it has to be spent on fire.
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know, the equipment like you bought this year for the volunteer, he could have got that from rebating, if we had. I understand what you're saying, that if I want to, for, uh, fire protection, but like I said, it's, it's all, the fire equipment is expensive.
Got you.
I mean, you didn't buy, what, fourteen? Equipment left, I owe seven, but almost a hundred some thousand dollars, or seven, twenty-seven some thousand dollars. You know, so I'm just looking, gotta look out for the.
It's possible, but we have two previous administrators and a consultant, and it's so it's possible that that money's allocated someplace else. But the policy the board has is you make a, a budget amendment, and you supply it, and we take a look at it, and make a.
I don't think he asked anything, he just had a recommendation, he said he wanted to revisit. Am I correct, Mr. Smith? Yeah, I don't think he asked, he didn't ask me anything, he just making a recommendation. He did the research, and he wanted to just kind of, want us to, uh, look at it and revisit. I just want to keep it about the same page, it, cause you didn't officially request anything, you just said, you wanted to revisit the money.
Whenever agreement or what else, you know, that's something to look into. Uh, therefore, staying with, with us.
All right, well, what we'll do, Mr. Smith, we'll look into it, and, uh, when, when the administrator get back, uh, if you, if you feel like it, uh, we can call, and, uh, what I like to do, cause see, like, right now, we've been about fifteen minutes, not cutting y'all, just kind of going around beating at the bush on this and that. We don't have administrator, what I like to do is get our financial person, if you want to have a conversation, see where the money allocated. Uh, cause we did have a consultant, see where the money is, so, and then they can give us an informed decision, how to use, whether to use, and give us our options on it.
All right.
If that's true.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Yeah, one more thing, and kind of hard for me to say what I want to say.
Say it.
But, you know, I've been doing thirty-one years, uh, working for a fire, city and county. And kind of looking at retiring. So, it had nothing to do with what we're going on now.
Yeah, oh, oh, oh.
I didn't say.
Oh. You kind of looking at, I don't know what that means, either you gonna retire, or you not gonna retire. And if you gonna retire, then give us, uh, 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 time to help. You train somebody for your position if you gonna retire. Now, if you don't know when that date is, I would hope to be a couple of months out, so we can send out some applications, and get somebody in here, and we, we, we don't want you to leave with the knowledge that you have, and like some of these other positions. Previous person didn't even get a chance to even talk to the person that we possibly might hire. Only thing I'm saying, i- if you did it your heart, and your mind made up, you can get with the president, or whoever you want to get with, and then we can come up with a plan, and see can we try to have somebody in here where you can partially train them before you go. That's all.
Mr. Smith, I'll say this. I, I, I appreciate what you done did, I see it every day. I, I try not even watch news, lately, I try not even read newspapers, I'll try to listen at news on the radio. Uh, uh, cause it seems like most news is bad news. Life is short. And your life belong to you. Regardless of what you done do, what I recommend, what your children, your wife, your parents, or everybody recommend, you gonna give them a counter. I would hope that you will be able to do with supervisor Gray say, but me personally, will say this. Do whatever you got to do, and, cause at the end of the day, I would wish you a doer, but we've been in some bad situation. God gonna, gonna provide, the county gonna move forward, and I appreciate it. And I hope you can stay along with us a little while, but if you don't, I don't know, cause I don't even want to know, it could be personal, it could be that. But do what you got to do, to take care of you, cause that's gonna be first and foremost. All right?
I'll check in that, like I said, and, uh, I'll be back with you on, on, uh, rural fire program. Appreciate it. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, I just have three guys that need to have routine raises. Uh, James Thompson, Courtney Jackson, and Jasmine Miller. Let's do the time and service, six months. You should have the paperwork.
I had the paperwork, but I, what I'm gonna do, if I'm, if I'm, uh, if I'm correct, I mean, well, I know I'm correct. I talked to them, the, uh, annual raises, I'm gonna make them pending, I'm gonna make them pending, uh, review of our county administrator, cause when I talk to, uh, deputy clerk, that they gotta be in, and they, deputy, I mean, the county administrator hasn't made choices, as long as you on your budget, you fine. But what we doing, we've been tightening up, things have been tight. So, what we, we ain't approved, proving nothing in the blind, not saying that you getting anything over, but we gonna get the approval through the administrator, so, uh, what I'm gonna do is, uh, you can call, you call them out, and I'm gonna ask for a motion, uh, pending approval of the county administrator, all of them are the same thing, it's twelve seventy-five. Uh, so we gave the six month, so you can, you want me to call them out? It's Courtney Jackson, and she's a juvenile detention officer.
Right.
James Thompson, juvenile detention officer, and Jasmine Miller, juvenile detention officer. Uh, all of them, the same, uh, twelve seventy-five an hour, hour rate, six month, uh, period. So, can I get a motion pending, uh, county administrator approval? They proper move by supervisor Gray, proper second by supervisor Wilson, but there being discussion. There'll be no discussion, I'll say vote by you to sign, I, and appone, and they had the same right, motion carried now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to see if I could, not in open session, discuss Concordia's some personnel issues, and professional services contracts, and what you to be eternal.
Fire mel report, Nick.
I'm here to talk about the home grants that we got funded years ago. Uh, Scott finally has all the houses cleared. My little family, my phone, no, 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 they did a good job. We're waiting on a lease, uh, June. So, we'll be submitting the title of payments to the state, clear the houses. So, moving forward, I still need two things done, and one is, uh, the asbestos, lead inspections on the homes, and then survey done on three of properties. And I haven't been able to find, no one's, back when we opened proposals for all these things, we chose, uh, Advanced Environmental Consultants to do the inspections, and we have like a contract, I sent it to Scott. The limitations on the grant for inspections is four hundred for home, that's four hundred for asbestos, and four hundred for lead. Uh, Advanced Environmental Consultants put seven hundred and fifty per home in their contract. Well, this may be negotiable. I will say their defense, these, these limitations are low, that's why I can't find a surveyor. For instance, uh, for surveying, the grant allows eighty hundred dollars a home. I can't find a surveyor that can do it for that price, so. Y'all know anybody? We, we've advertised twice, so we can actually see out proposals, you know, just be a phone call at this point.
Mr. President, is, 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 is what they paying is that they going rate to do a survey, or they?
It's not now.
Under.
It's under, it's way under.
Well, how, how, how you expecting to get some money there? To work like I don't know these work.
I mean, I, we complained, see, a lot of the operations, a lot of all the other administrators, these grants throughout the state. And in some cases, uh, the county or the city is to pay the difference. Um, but anyway, I just want to let y'all know that, that is, that's kind of an issue. Um, but I do have the contract last, that's the factor, what I can do is go back to her. I told her I would approach the board with this price, it may be negotiable, I may can go back to her, at least get that down to a reasonable.
Do you have some calls of survey? Do you have calls?
Is anyone giving you any? Oh, no, no one's giving us anything. We advertised twice, and no one even submitted a proposal.
And so, you don't even know what it costs to survey?
Well, I, I, I'll say this, I talked to Hayden Kaiser, he didn't give me a price, uh, see if they would be interested. And I told him what the limit was, cause, uh, we can't do it for that. So.
Uh, would you, would you please just sign us a proximity, well, I mean, I don't even know if we should be.
Our county surveyors, he.
We need to know exactly what.
We have a county surveyor.
Robert Green.
Robert Green, yeah, we got a county surveyor.
Robert, Robert Green.
Robert Green, and then Tommy Green's got his own surveying.
We have a county.
County surveyor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is he got paid?
He gets paid.
He get paid, do they?
Get paid. But, but he.
It's, no, he doesn't automatically get paid, he has to choose to do it in a contract like anything else.
Yeah.
So. For a boundary line dispute, the court has to appoint the surveyor, and there's a fixed price for that.
So, why don't you kind of say, and, 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 and even if you don't do a fair, at least get a price so you know what you looking at. I think somebody needs to know, uh, a price on it.
All right, well, that's your fine. It's all just.
Even George. How, how many is it here?
Okay. Well, look, that's all I got.
All right, hey, no, you got something else up there.
That the extension line.
Yeah. It's for Jones Lumber?
That's right.
So, you want me to sign, you ain't got nothing there?
Just I can give it to you.
No, you got an extension for Jones, you are explaining you.
Yeah, what that is, uh, this is probably before, um, Kevin and Wes were on board, actually, that, that, that was Jones Lumber Company, a development infrastructure program grant for Jones Lumber, uh, to do some, I think, some road work, or whatever there, whatever on, off of Martin Luther King Drive.
Yeah.
It's been extended repeatedly, because they haven't met their jobs numbers. They feel like this could be the year they'll beat the, the jobs number.
All right, well.
So, the NBA's requested us, it expired, I think, a month ago or so, so they want us to request that, they want a extended request.
Yeah, and I have to sign it, so, I got a, uh, I need a motion to be decided, um, this is extension request for Mr. L. We're proper move by supervisor hundred, proper second by, um, supervisor Wilson, with there being discussion? There be no discussion, I'll say vote by you to sign, I, and appone, and they had the same right, motion carried now.
All right, since you brought that one up, we have a very similar project, also needs to be extended, but I, I don't know.
But I'm having paperwork on it, I know you wanted that signature.
Well, it's with, uh, Delta, Delta Energy, out at, uh, the old IP facility.
So, I think that's.
And I don't know what's going on with that project. I know they, they just sent their quarterly report, and they're way down on numbers.
Yeah.
We've extended this one multiple times over the last few years, so I don't know.
So.
I didn't send you a letter, well, maybe I did send you a letter, but we hadn't talked about that, because Jones Lumber feel like they're gonna beat the number. I don't know what's going on.
No, no, the only thing I was doing, I knew you got something going on, but I know, you know, that last time I came over here, you know, I was in that office. Everything that the board do when the president, thank God, this is my last meeting, this is the emergency meeting, cause I'll be ready for a new election come January, uh, but, uh, no, I was, I was just teasing, cause you know, we speak through our minutes. And if you got some paperwork up here for me to sign, I have to get it approved before I can sign it. And a lot of people misunderstand that, cause I tell you what, in the last couple of months, I have got tons and tons, the last couple of weeks, tons and tons and tons of calls, I need the president to sign. The president sits here and uses ink pen all day, but the president of the board only presides over the meeting and sign documents. He don't have any executive power, it has to be at least, uh, three to two, if not unanimous to vote for him to do it. So, I was just trying to make sure I keep myself covered in the signature. So, we good enough, when you get some necessary paperwork, and by that time. So we good enough, when you get some necessary paperwork and by that time I know some things going on with that, the end or whatever, we'll have necessary paperwork for the next president and we'll get it signed. Alright? Alright, Mr. Dollar.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
Uh, first thing I have, uh, Mr. Middleton, uh, was working late, late at dump side in Georgia Road, I haven't got any information on that, um, where we at on that.
Chief Dollar, just follow up with uh, Miles on that, please.
George Crowe?
Next thing I have, I was, uh, had two citizens off of uh, Cardinal Drive call in uh, about the striping, you know, we overlayed car when it was striping. And we've only gone stripe those areas, but I had two different residents call in to our office about striping. I got a call to the striping for Cardinal Drive, which is two miles of striping, which is thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, I had a call last week on Providence Road about the striping on it, a resident called about Providence Road. Uh, we ain't done any work on here or whatever. I talked to Providence, I talked to Mr. Ford this morning about the state aid route on that. You know, state aid been asking us or requesting to spend some of our state aid funds or whatever, we need to do some maintenance and others. But Providence needs some surface work before it gets striped. Last the board was, I, Mr. Ford looks into the state aid portion of Providence, he said what we can do, cause every year they write on their report, it was on their report of some maintenance work. And they've asked for, you know, striping on different, or they make their recommendations to striping on some state aid routes. Uh, that road does, it leads into the port, it's a lot of big trucks, a lot of traffic on that road. Uh, guy was concerned, he said he almost hit a chemical truck last week and they called in and said night, said he didn't have any, you know, it's still looking strong. But I brought both of them at the same time, Cardinal has nothing to do with state aid, but the striping has been a bit of concern throughout the county. Striping is going up, like you said, you can see if you can get it done for six, seven, five thousand miles, this is two miles at thirty thousand, so it's about eight, ten, I think, thousand miles. Uh, I don't know what the board.
Mr. President.
Guess I'll supervise Gray.
Uh, this is part of my report, but I might as well go and say it now. We need to come up with a plan and to address a lot of the stuff you talking about, we need a plan in place. Cause they always told me proper plan for that. Then just receive calls from people in the community saying this need to be striped, that need to be striped. We as a county need to come up with a plan and we'll know how much money we got going towards striking, we know how many roads we need to strike still. There's people just calling in and say they need stuff done and that is being at uh, the end of the year and I don't think no striking, nothing like that gonna be going on. But in two thousand and twenty-four, I, 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 I think, I know going about one week. But we got legislative breakfast, uh, on the what? The level, we have a legislative breakfast. And it's just me saying this, we need to have a vision for this county. And the vision need to be wrote down, like everybody can understand what the vision is, because right now we jumping all over the place with no vision. And we have a legislative breakfast next Monday. What are we gonna go over there and tell them, cause we had had a meeting among ourselves to get a, a legislative agenda. And we going to Washington DC in February. And we need to have plans in place to lobby our, our congressional folks, because we don't have lobbyists anymore. So to say we, this is our last meeting. I hope we don't end two thousand and twenty-three and start two thousand and twenty-four the same way we ended two thousand and twenty-three with no plan. Cause that's, your plan failed, thank you.
I did get a call too, and I think I brought this up in the board meeting a few months ago on that car, Cardinal Drive about an accident like to occur on that because of after we paved the road, there's no striping and it's, it's, doesn't have any lights or anything down it. And uh, I think uh, someone daughter ran off the road, could have gotten killed or whatever. And I would hate the fact that someone does get killed on that road because it doesn't have any light nor any striking where they can see or run into someone. And uh, I think you said it was like thirty thousand, maybe we can't do it at this time, but it's something we need to definitely look at. Because when we get caused like that and then we don't do anything about it and prevention does help stop something like that from happening. And I would hate to see someone get killed because we didn't take the time to strike that road.
Yes, uh, and uh, supervisor Gray, I don't wanna sound like, I, I don't want you to sound like I'm contradicting you and say this, but I heard what you said about a plan. And I, and I do wanna say this, and I, I'm included with it, so I, 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 I don't want you to take this like I'm, I'm saying it directly towards you, I'm saying this to all of us. A lot of times, in eight, four years, I hope that they get better, it, there are plans already in place. Uh, the, uh, you might not realize this plan, the state aid give us a plan every year that we choose not to follow. That's what I'm saying, our plan, some of these priority roads that we have, and I, and I, and I'm, I'm gonna speak it for me and then take you out of the, uh, supervisor Gray's, I, cause I, I wanna, cause I'm, I'm trying to work together, but we have, the road department comes up with a plan. They look at stuff every, uh, all kind of ways and they have it in their office. And a lot of time what happens supervisor Gray to keep it uh, upfront and open, a lot of time if we don't take time out to meet and discuss it openly and say, well, this is what happened and this is what we need to prioritize. A lot of time, me included, I'm pretty much sure everybody at this table that's supervisor, supervisors included, cause we get calls from people out of our district. And so we go to the road department and other areas need them to do this. So I think that we got some stuff in place and I think that we are just not maximizing uh, our plan by not working together. We kind of doing on an individual basis, cause there's some things come up in the boardroom that each and every one of us sometimes have no awareness of until we bringing it up here. So I, I, I do uh, recommend that in the future, that we look at our department head, uh, look at our state aid plan and actually put that together, so we won't be uh, empty handed when we go to legislative breakfast, we won't be empty handed when we go to uh, Washington DC. And so that's why I'm saying, I'll say this for me, I, I will take a better look at the resources that presented, that I have in my hands and I'm not used, alright? Thank you.
And to say that, we do have a four-year road plan that we go on, um, you know, like you talking about a plan, it, it, every year in our budget, we maybe cook in things and everything takes money to get it done. Uh, like I said, we're striking, we don't have a dollar, I mean, we don't have a hundred thousand, whatever in our budget for a striking, we have a little money in asphalt and things like that. So we have to beg, borrow, steal, whatever I do with inside of that budget to make it work every year. Uh, it would be good for some of those items to be in that budget to put in like a striping project. We didn't have the twenty-five thousand dollars a year, whatever, you know, it might not do a lot, but it would do a mile or it would do a half a mile, whatever we need done in those areas. Just like me and Mr. Ford spoke this morning on plans, we talked this morning uh, about state aid. Uh, like I said, that's a decision the board has to make, I mean, we've come before the board, Mr. Ford, we've come before the board and, and made some recommendations of, or not recommendations, but this needs to be done or these stripes or whatever, and we hadn't went through with it. Uh, the bridge, he was saying we need to apply the pools, bridge funds, Mr. Ford was saying this morning that now we can't apply to next year, but as long as we apply, we'll get our funds back, but they have four of those funds because we didn't apply for anything, you know, of the bridge to get done. So me and him talked this morning on what four bridges was there and me and him gonna look at, I know two of them are in D R D. So uh, me and him gonna get together and come back before the board and, and let him make his recommendation of what bridge that he, you know, recommends to get programmed or repaired. So it is some plans in place, like I said, me and Mr. Ford just spoke this morning just on the same subject and that's reason I brought it up. But I guess we need to put some monies in these funds or in the budget to take care of some of this. I mean, like now, just for instance here, this thirty-eight thousand dollar for these two miles, I mean, it's not even money. We don't use any money off that road bond or whatever, and whenever we go back to using it, cause it's about a half a million left, it's just no money there. So, um, we do try to put some plans together, I, I think we do a better job at it though, but I, I just wanted to bring it up this morning and tell all that. Uh, next thing I have. Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, you need a motion from me to get him to start looking at Providence Road and state aid funds available and what we can do there? It is a main artery into the port, it's a lot of truck traffic, if there's state aid funds available, we need to look at what we can do there. Uh, live traffic on that road and it is dangerous.
I agree one hundred percent. But at the end of the day, uh, if I can come back and say they got something in their district. That's why I say if we get a plan in place, then all of this gonna be part of the plan, we ain't gotta keep doing what we're doing right now. That's just me, I'm used to being organized right now, we not organized at all.
Go ahead, Rob.
Alright, the next thing I have, uh, and I spoke with the supervisor in this area this morning, uh, about this on River Terminal Road, we done E W P on that project. We emailed J K S numerous times, I have emailed here from the last one was uh, November the twenty-first. On that project, close that project out or they closed it out, but the contractor agreed to put a four inch pipe, I mean, I mean, an eight inch pipe and replace the four inch pipe that we will not handle water coming out of the river. That has not been done yet.
What's the name of the ground?
It's River Terminal Road, Hope is the contractor and right here November the twenty-first, uh, have you not, I have not heard, you know, he has not heard from me. So, uh, I, I, I don't know what to, to do about it, I mean, we have sent email after email to him, I go back, pull him up, I, I, I just, you know, just.
Mr. Slow. What can we do about that?
We see what's, what they're talking about, nobody's talking about this.
Well, it, no, it's just been ongoing E W P, remember once we all closed out, we discussed this, it's been some time back when they closed them out. I mean, here's the email right here, that I mean, more, the last one we sent to him, I mean, like I said, it just, no good, we need to send emails to them, but I don't get any, you know.
No, I'm really familiar with it, take a look and see, that was on their punch list, close out punch list?
Correct. There's something they need to do, they need to do it.
Here's, here's the deal, and supervisor Gray has said this in the past, um, pretty simple, they've got a punch list to complete, they got a job to complete, if they don't complete it, they shouldn't be allowed to bid on another county job. And if they can't, I mean, it, it, you gotta make an example at some point. You can't continue, I mean, this is happening over and over and over again. Uh, so they're, they should be on the cannot bid list until they complete the job that they started.
And like I said, it's just, it's one of the deals that we need to close out, we need to get our reimbursement back after some of that seven hundred something thousand dollars back, we were all trying to get this, we want the sites in on it.
I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send his emails and if they're required to do it, we're gonna demand that they do it, it's an official demand and then we can file suit.
And when we do our bids, we put that in there, inability to complete past projects apart from your bids specs and then.
Okay, long as it's somewhere in writing, because we could sit here and discuss this, but if it's not in writing, like say our minutes speaks for us, so.
It needs to be during our bids specs, that will include that in, George certainly will do that. But that is how you rate people that bid, based on prior work, whether they completed job, timing and all that, that stuff. We include that and rate, rate people that bid accordingly and like the president said, it's not necessarily, lowest in always the best.
Last thing I have is two adjudicated lots, I'll send, that picture real quick, I'm sending, uh, thank you, President Gaines, you have one on seven, Oakland Park, uh, I think such that you have one on eight, eight, feset.
I do.
Y'all have pictures in front of you now.
I, I will do, but I, I don't think it's actually.
That seven.
Seven Oakland Parkway, I'm looking at, I just get a lot of some things, and I don't actually think it's a, uh, a judicating property, I think the Navy just got a bunch of trash in their yard. I mean, it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's trash, it's not, it's, it's not, it's trash that can be picked up, it's not cars.
Well, and, and speaking on Mr. Gaines', it was several months back and they were calling, it was some boats and vehicles that weren't running, things like that in the yard, we contacted them. Uh, it looked like that's been moved, but now the neighbors complaining about all this trash that's there and it looks like dogs has tore it up or things like that's where it's coming from, and I guess they just want to pick it up, I don't know.
Yeah.
It was gonna be a offense, last time we spoke with him.
And they didn't, so.
Scott, Mr. President, Scott, uh, legally. And it is not, I don't even say that, legally, what can we do?
If the, there's debris that causes a health and safety to the community here.
Wait, 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 let me see, let me see. Now, this look like paper. This paper, so, and, and what health and safety that paper gonna cause? That's the reason I say I ain't wanna open them kind of worms up, cause I know they're large, but if I don't just having paper in the yard, we can't use that and say it is endangering. Who's gonna endanger?
I hate to say never, but it, again, I usually try to defer to supervisors districts in too, whether they think it's a health and safety hazard. And then the board makes a judicial determination after making all of that. But yeah, you're right, it's gotta be, it's gotta be to the health and safety of it and that may not be, but may. Be up to the board to determine that, that's what you have to determine. Is a, uh, risk to health and safety.
I, I just recommend like supervisor, they just send them a letter and, and ask them to clean up their property.
Yeah. Off of that on your seven.
Yeah, so can we recommend that, do we be, can you just send them a letter? Cause we not, yes, we not adjudicated.
Now, this eight thousand bro, we need to adjudicate this, Johnson, this here, we have a lot of abandoned cars, they got everything, this, this is adjudicated, you all like to look at it.
What is that now, eight what?
Eight thousand.
Alright, Jeff.
If you wanna keep talking about that, Dr. Kim, do you need that?
So, um, what's the plan of the board, has anybody seen the picture, what's the plan? Have you any taken that, you got some of?
I'll send them, first, just a letter saying contact us by this date, you know, talk about cleanup, try to give them an opportunity to do it themselves first and then they, yeah.
Okay, alright, and we're clear.
And both of those lots are repeat.
Alright. All right, thank you. Mr. Roberts, the pen though, what time we get out here, how busy are you today?
Whatever you need.
All right, I'll call it.
I don't have much, I just wanted to say that the, um, contractor has completed Magnolia Glove Site Number Two. And they had completed all three sites on the latest EWP, um, that we had on construction. Um, we will have a final inspection, um, we'll set that up, um, scheduled for inspection for that project. Uh, with that, the contractor did submit the file on full pay, pay application, in the amount of hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And as well as we would like the engineering fees associated with that in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. I would request the board's approval too.
You heard the question that engineer, and you heard his report on completion of work, what would be the pledge of the board? It's been properly moved by supervisor Hudson, properly settled by supervisor Wilson, would that be in a discussion?
George, we're making our application for our reimbursement.
That's what you want to do.
You gonna do that, okay.
If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you, just sound aye. In a pause, Navy has a sign right, most care, you know. And I do appreciate that, uh, you know, you've been pretty, ever since we had that last problem about losing that seven hundred and some thousand dollars on last year, uh, we asked that you step up and take that task, to when you finish and you get paid, then you will submit for us to get reimbursed. And so, you know, so far, ever since, uh, we asked you to do that, every time you submit a payment, you're always willing to, uh, submit our reimbursement payment, our person said, we appreciate that.
Okay, so, now I'm asking for the board's approval for the president's signature for our next, uh, reimbursement request in R C S.
You heard the question that, engineer, it's been properly moved by supervisor Hudson, properly settled by supervisor Gray, would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, just sound aye. In a pause, Navy has a sign right, most care, you know.
And that should, that should include all of the work, now that will be retained and maybe some additional, um, work that may be done following the final inspection, so that'll be course next year.
Okay, all right.
The striping on the party that we did, we did submit, let me replace a while back, say they haven't got back the rest of the plan and inspection for that. So that's really the only thing they have. Uh, as it relates to the L D P party we were talking about earlier, um, the county does have four eligible bridges that can be programmed, of course, it can't be programmed to, to next year. Uh, but I can provide that list to y'all on the top of the year, as well as I can represent that list of state aid projects that are eligible, uh, for funding to you guys. You make a decision on the way to use it up. State aid has been admin about programming projects that you are able to funding, which is, uh, yeah, which is very important to them, so I present that list to you as well as the beginning of the year.
Yeah, uh, well, I have to add one question for you. Uh, I, I was on the email between, uh, the road manager himself and I in my area, uh, during the last storm, without, we had, um, a striping project bid on Pine Ridge, I think in May of last year, and, you know, one time I brought up our reflectors, but I know they wasn't under warranty because they, you know, they pop up, but, uh, we have lost some of the visibility of our lines in that they're not, um, shot, that they're not reflecting as much, and so, you know, I know we did the, um, top of line, uh, thermal paint or whatever to do that, so, you know, the question was, I, unless, y'all answered, I didn't see it. What, what was, was any kind of warranty on that, or what on, on that work?
So, once the project was approved and by state aid accepted, and you all accepted the project, then no longer the contractor's responsibility after that. Um, and so, of course, the striping does, I guess, wherever with weather, and I guess vehicle traffic, and everything of that nature. So, I mean.
So basically, what you're saying, ain't no, it ain't.
I can't, I can't let the contractor come back and re-strip that project.
Okay, well, if that's the case, we've been, uh, I mean, if we ain't gonna, and it ain't your fault, but I, I, I will look at other options, there's no, there's no need to, I mean, just, just me, if we do a striping project in my area, because sometimes, you know, we look at, you pay top dollar, you might pay extra four thousand dollars, because you say this is top paint, if it don't last no more than the one twenty thousand dollars, it don't last no more than a year. I just want to do that for optional, uh, for, for saving, basically.
I mean, someone have to explain to me, show people what you're talking about, I mean, I sent my gentleman out at night, who did all three roads that were done in the project, and I had pictures that showed striping, I had to show, he had to explain to me exactly what you're talking about when you said there's no visibility.
When, when, when it's, you had to come with, I, I'm not talking about a drill, when it's raining and it's out, you know, you, you had to, well, we'll, we'll get with you, see, I just want, I didn't never see it.
We just called about it this morning, me and him, while we were moving town road, I brought it back up about it, I said, we got it, we forgot it. He said he had some pictures that were his inspector when I took pictures at night, and it's clear, like I said, they are there, but as you said, they are fading away, so, they're not lasting, uh, I said, we Morgan Town Road's a sign, you know, where we got this stated, done do, done that, it's, it's, where me and him were standing this morning, I said, you know, what you did, it's not last.
And not on you none, by no means that we pointed that you, because all you did was engineer, you didn't put the paint down, you know, you wasn't come to put the paint down. I'm just saying the quality, for the price that we've been paying for striping, you definitely don't have a quality there. It, it's no way that, you know, you spend, just like you just said, two miles of road, thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of striping, and it don't last a year. That ain't, that ain't good, that, that's not good quality for your money, money, that's how I would say.
Is there, is there any expectation about how long a stock of jobs last, I mean, three years, four years, or, I mean, one year doesn't sound like a very good. Did you touch it up after?
It had something to do with, like I said, vehicle traffic and weather, those all being fact, the longevity of striping, just, it's just well as paid, so.
And, and too, that's a concrete road, but you let them know that up front, because it's a different application they put on to make it fine, I guess, so that.
Yeah.
Concrete, and they did, yeah, they did do that, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we let them know everything up front going into it, that this is concrete, or this wouldn't be blacktop, or whatever it may be, so, and, and they did do what they were supposed to do, but like I said, it's.
You know, I've been, uh, and I, and I mean, we can't do nothing about it, but I, I just want, I made that reference for, for future pro, uh, project. I think that, that striping project was maybe a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that we did those three roads, and you ain't get seven months for a hundred, you know what I'm saying? You got some, you got some striping out there, but I'm saying that visibility has left in seven months, because it won't be until May of next year, until it's a year of fully under one-year warranty, and so.
And you got on the rate pain markers, you brought it up several months back, or a few months back, they have been getting beat off or whatever, but then you look at them interstates, they do stay. Interstates, so I don't know what application they use, or what glue they use to bond it, or whatever, but it, it needs something to look.
I know, I guess, three months ago, but I kinda understand, and I, and it's not fun that you, I understand that, because we do have a lot of truck traffic, uh, on that road. You know, you got Allen, Bob, Farm, now, they, you have people that cut timber on there, so I do understand it's been truck traffic for the reflectors, but I didn't know it would wear the paint as, you know, striping as much, but anyway, that's, that's the end of it, I, I think.
You have a question for me?
Yeah, I do, President Gaines had a question for us. Uh, this was on my list, uh, to bring up the Deaf Field Road Project, where are we with that?
Um, we talked about the five hundred dollars, we, what we also talked about in the letter to the constituents, about them having to do their own service lines.
Okay, and they agreed on that, so, yeah. And I don't want, you know, I don't want us to keep ticking this down the road, this can down the road, because it started getting higher and higher, it went from seventeen to twenty-eight. So, I mean, from twenty-eight to forty, something, whatever, so, we need to try to get this out before the end of the year, if we can, because in a new year, prices gonna start going up again, and do that, yeah. But all of the constituents, you know, that has been established that they would pay the cost before we even get, you know, when we got the signatures, so.
We'll take that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Part number four is next.
Good morning, board, just have two quick things. Uh, I don't know if we'll be able to do this first one, it's actually a budget amendment, uh, paperwork's been signed. What it is, it's eighteen thousand dollars moved from forfeited funds in the fund that holds, uh, the money, and it has been awarded, proper paperwork's gone through the court, and the, uh, we've asked Ms. Lewis, sent paperwork over to Ms. Lewis, to move it over into a working account yesterday, uh, into one-one-three, and we're just gonna move it into one account of, of trap, which is eighteen thousand dollars.
So I see Paige has necessary paperwork, uh, so what would be the, uh, pledge of the board?
All you, let me ask you, all you doing is moving some from one fund to another fund.
Yes, but indeed, all of forfeited money, or all of the seized money stays into a non-interest bearing account pending outcome of the court. It's been adjudicated, it's been awarded, and then now we're asking to move it from that line item into a line item that we can expend to the tax.
The proper move by supervisor Hudson.
Sir.
Proper second by supervisor Gray, would that be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, just sound aye. In a pause, Navy has a sign right, most care, you know.
Uh, supervisor Wilson, just to carry, or follow up on a conversation we had a couple of months ago, I sat down with, uh, the new incoming district attorney, and forfeited funds is gonna be a top priority in January. There's approximately a hundred and five thousand sitting waiting to be dispersed, adjudicated, or whatever needs to happen, and there's approximately fourteen vehicles. Um, so, hopefully that will help offset some of our shortfall, uh, within the budget, in order to, to help us out, which is what this is right here.
Certainly, um, I, I think that the, the, uh, lady's going out of office there, she did not wanna use forfeited fund, or not use any of those powers, for the district attorney had for that. Um, and, and those funds certainly helped the county and helped the sheriff's office out. When drug, drug dealers get caught, part of the price you pay for being a criminal is you lose your vehicles, and any cash you have on hand if you get it. And, uh, for some reason, the district attorney did not wanna do that, um, in Adams County, Franklin County, I mean, all of them lost a lot of money over the last four years, and thankfully, uh, when Mr. Cotton gets in, he is going to pursue that to the fullest, because, um, that's part of the penalty for being a crook, so, um, I'm all for it, thank you for that, David.
Uh, the other thing I have, you should have this paperwork, Mr. President, is hiring of a part-time employee, he was a former employee. Um, he will go down to the special operations group in a part-time status, and that would be at Hayden, Nickman. Uh, hourly rate of eighteen dollars an hour, so annual, that would be eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty.
Is this replacing employee?
Yes, we have six openings right now, that would be within the budget of replacing a open slot.
Well, uh, I can make a motion pending, uh, administrative, I mean, ask for a motion, pending, uh, administrative approval. So then proper move by supervisor Wilson, would I get a second? Proper second by supervisor Hudson, would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, just sound aye. In a pause, Navy has a sign right, most care, you know.
Uh, the last thing is, we would like to invite the board on December twenty-second, we're having Chief Neely's, uh, going away, retired slash retirement, uh, party at the range at one o'clock. Uh, we also, so we're losing an employee with forty-plus years' experience, has been here all the way since Billy Farrell, which I believe was five administrations. It's a lot of experience we're fixing to lose. We also, we haven't received the written resignation, but we, uh, received it orally, uh, this last week, that Major Frank Smith is gonna take the job at the DA's office as an investigator, uh, he is over our criminal investigation division. We're gonna lose thirty-five or thirty-six years' experience there as well, so, we're gonna have to send off for him that day, uh, and Chief Neely, so, if any of y'all are able to attend, we'd, we'd appreciate it.
What was the time on that?
I'm sorry.
Time, one o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm good.
Twenty-second, December twenty-second.
Same day we gonna be sworn in.
That's a sworn swearing in, yes, sir. So we're going to have a range after the swearing in.
All right, lay out the topic, man, I'm gonna have some cold, let me stop it.
Does board have any questions for you?
I don't know, anybody have any question for? Thank you. All right, is number four number four. Public comment, do we have any public comment?
Mo, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. He just wanna be in our presence.
All right, um, now I'm coming to the task, supervisor Gray.
Concerned, Mr. President, uh, you come to Morgan Town, uh, uh, Robert, did you see anything on, on that, uh, grant application that I gave you, that we possibly qualify for? Y'all just looking at it and, and get better.
Engineer vote, look at the, uh, streets and roadway safety and the, uh, bridge.
Okay.
So, uh, he's gonna check into both of the, engineers, and just see what they, what it's about, what it is.
Okay, uh, you, uh, we have a youth leadership, um, Tuesday, and, uh, it requires that these two supervisors to explain to the youth leadership group, uh, about being supervisors, I'm, I'm part of the group, so, uh, somebody got to volunteer at nine o'clock in the morning, uh, don't fight over it.
Where is this at?
Right here.
And what, what day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And, uh, we do have a legislative breakfast coming up, uh, the next Monday, and, uh, I don't know what our progress, our to the legislature, but we need to get together and come up with a plan and submit to them on, on, uh, that's just me standing there. Um, this is the month that we ride our roads, and, 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 and January, beginning of February, we got to sign this, uh, affidavit saying that we gonna roll our roads, so don't forget to ride your roads in, in this month, all the roads. I mean, come on over in District Four and look at some of these roads, and I'm gonna come over in District Three, and Two, One, and Five, and look at those roads. Uh, I am on the Transportation Committee on the federal level, so that's the reason I asked Robbie and the engineer to look at some of those grant oppo, uh, opportunities that they send me, and the reason I'm asking, because some of them, uh, is gonna be going on around the time that we going to Washington DC, so I would like to have something in my hand to give our congressional people, and let them know that we are interested in, uh, one of those grants, or both of those grants, or whatever the case may be. Uh, I ain't, I ain't, I don't really have that much today, but, uh, my sympathy goes out to the Webb family, the Byrne family, the Simpson family, the Press Road family, the Clay family, the Thornton family, the Sims family, and the McCullum family. And the biggest shock of all to the Brown family, they caught me by surprise, when former mayor Bush Brown's wife, we was in a meeting, and they got, I think, was, was, she got a text. Somebody got a text saying that she had passed, and, uh, really wasn't ready for that. But, one of the best young beans I ever met in my life, and, uh, I would never, ever forget former mayor Bush Brown and, uh, his wife, and I got a reminder in my shop, I bought their daughter, drop-top BMW, so I would never forget them. And, uh, I wanna just wish everybody safe holidays, and, uh, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and what, what day do we supposed to meet?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth. The fourteenth. And last, I'm gonna say this again, I'm gonna keep saying it because it, it, it's very important that we, as a board, come up with a plan for this county. And the good part about it, everybody don't have to get along. We just have to come up with a plan for the citizens and I just believe proper planning prevent poor performance and, and I, I don't know, the last time we had a plan in place that Supervisor District One and the Supervisor District Two and the Supervisor District Three and the Supervisor District Four and the Supervisor District Five was, was at the table coming up with a plan for this county, I think that needs to happen. Uh, and I know the, uh, county administrator, interim county administrator is not here, but that's the number one plan we need to come up with, hiring a county administrator because, uh, uh, I haven't been a county governor that long, Angela been here longer than me, I ain't never in my life seen a job go on this long that is the most important job in the county. The person that keep up with the money and we haven't even hired nobody yet. So I pray, like I say, we had, we, we got a lot of positive, good things going on in this county and, and the only thing I'm looking forward to is, uh, pray that we come together and whatever happened in two thousand and twenty-three or the last turn, we leaving behind us and moving in two thousand and twenty-four with a positive attitude. And at the end of the day, everybody up here know my favorite quote, teamwork make the dream work. So when, when, when everybody up here is pulling in the same direction, Adams County way, and we got two people pulling this way, two people pulling that way, and one person ain't pulling at all, don't nobody win. So at the end of the day, I, I, I think it's gonna get better and what touched my heart was, uh, I know for the last, since two thousand, I've been elected official and they watch everything I do. When I say they, I'm talking about the kids. I be around a whole lot of kids, you know what they say? They say, man, we watch you. So guess what? I gotta be in order at all times, 'cause I can't communicate with the kids and tell them they're out of order when I'm out of order. So I try to be in order at all times and sometimes we don't want to be role models, but this what this job is. So if you don't wanna be a role model, you shouldn't be elected official. And, and closing, whatever happens in Washington DC or wherever else in this world, I pray to God, we gonna let that trigger down Adams County, 'cause at the end of the day, we still gotta work with y'all. And that concludes my report. Thank you and I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Supervisor Hudson.
That's okay, a couple of, a couple of things, but I do wanna say I agree with Supervisor Gray on a plan, all of us need to get together probably, uh, the beginning of the new year and come up with a plan. I don't know if we're gonna do something for the legislative breakfast, because we talking about next Monday and we getting ready to go to a conference and I don't know if that would happen by next Monday, but we do need a plan. And also, since we don't have lobbyists, we do need to have something to take to Washington. I have something in mind that I wanna take that I've been working on this year that I would like to continue to take to Washington, uh, dealing with the road. Um, another thing is the home grant, uh, applications that we have allocated a hundred thousand dollars for. Uh, Scott, where are we with that? If you get the criteria's off to Southwest Planning and?
I've sent them over to Southwest Planning, I do, and I had not before, so it fell back on me. I thought I'd send an email over, but didn't, I got the criteria back over, copy it to all of y'all. Uh, I need a, a resolution to carry that out, which I was gonna ask my report, but we can ask for it now. The way the criteria that I think is best from a legal standpoint, keeps us from not making determinations one way or the other, we have flat criteria of whether you qualify or not, and if you qualify, it comes on a first bump, first serve basis, so you apply, qualify, you get it. Also, we, as previously did, that we try to do two from each supervisor's district. Ultimately, and then, and then that, that criteria, and then we kind of adopted and imposed the other, uh, grants, uh, how they use the money and so forth, and we refer back to that grant for that policies. But then if the board wanted to override some of those policies, but for the ones I just talked about, the hard pass ones, that we could do that. So we designed the regulations out, it's a few pages, um, I can pass them along to you just in case, but it's basically the same, uh, criteria as previously used, except for what, extending that, that, uh, that.
Mr. President, I, I wanna be perfectly clear and I understand everything you said, but, uh, let's get back to each one of our districts being represented by two people. Uh, that's part of what you're saying to them, because let me tell you something, the worst thing could happen is we have a hundred thousand dollars in all of this spending district folks. That, that wouldn't be fair to, to the rest of the supervisors, so that's the most important piece that they need to understand, that all of us need to be represented with that hundred thousand dollars. That was the purpose.
Yes, Ricky, now, the caveat would be if we apply and let's say District Two doesn't get applications, at that point the board could then decide that we're gonna deviate. It'd come back to the board to make that decision if we deviate.
Okay.
The, the, yes, sir. So sorry if I didn't. And that's the resolution, I, I'll go ahead and pass it. When it comes back to me, y'all can make it, not, I'll ask people to take their action on it. But it's a resolution, it shows you the legal authority that we have, that was something that Southwest.
Send an email?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I read it, I already read.
It's would, and Southwest wanted to know the authorities, showed them and all that.
I, I read.
Yeah, I think we all have read that, 'cause I think you sent it out back a while.
And I, and I thought I'd sent it out.
Yeah, you did.
It didn't work, so that, that came back on me, not real fault.
Okay, 'cause I think I, there was some clarifications in that resolution that I spoke to you about.
Yes.
I don't know if you clarified them or whatever and put it in there, but something.
I, I did, so I read and, um, so he's gonna bring up in his report and I hear a couple more supervisors have read the resolution, so, um, can I get a motion to approve?
Some.
Second. The proper move by Supervisor Hudson, properly second by Supervisor Gray, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you who sign a aye. Any opposed, may they have a say right most carried now.
I think I brought that up out of Washington DC, that we all get together and try to have something that we can submit to Washington DC. Even if it's in our district, we may need to look at something like that or even a plan for, uh, some prospects to come in, that something needs to be discussed, we need to get with China and discuss prospects or whatever that we may need some funding that Washington DC can help us on. That's something needs to be done. And that's all I have. And I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years and have a safe ones also. Thank you, that's it.
I'll supervise it up.
Yeah, Supervisor Gray did mention the vacancy we've had at county administrator and it has been tough, but I think we've been very fortunate with, uh, Mr. Lambert and the services he's provided and I'm very thankful for Scott and Brandy and the tireless, they have been keeping us afloat, because it's been additional tasks on top of their daily duties already and I think they've done a phenomenal job and I just wanna thank y'all for what you've done. Uh, Burke Road, Scott, is there anything I need to do?
So we got an email back from Sky, who works over at the US Fisheries and Wildlife, giving us another, new contact for somebody else at their department for a light weight, so I need to contact them and, and find out, um, we can reach out to our, uh, congressional delegation and, and see if they can help put this on, um, 'cause, I mean, this is a project they brought to us, Wildlife and Fisheries brought to us and everything's ready to go, except our whole of the water, Wildlife and Fisheries.
Access to their ground.
Um.
Fair enough.
Yes.
That's all I've ever wanted.
Silliest thing I've ever, I've been waiting on for eighteen months. Oh, wow.
What is that cost to go on date now? So, uh, real quick, back to county administrator, we do have applications, everybody does that, uh, that were turned into us today, so what do you, what do y'all wanna do on time frame on that? Do y'all wanna submit your selections to Corbett and Trapp? Said interviews up? Next week?
Next week?
Start setting up interviews?
You wanna do that next week? Or do you wanna do that October?
No, we didn't.
We gotta have some.
Before it came, I mean, I think we'll get a weekly look on, but I think we need to go on from point, county administrator soon as possible.
I'll figure it out this weekend, I've, I've got my own schedule too.
I ain't looked at. I just got mine.
I ain't got mine.
Robbie, ain't no you.
So within the next two weeks, I'll say that. We need, we need to schedule within the next two weeks to do interviews for the, uh, county administrator position, so we'll, we'll try to, uh, once we get all the applications, uh, turn in our, ask Corbett, Corbett to send several dates and see what dates available for.
All right, uh, last thing I have, Supervisor Gray again, did mention the losses we had last week and we have a bunch and, uh, but we also, and he, I believe he mentioned it, uh, we lost Pat Burns, who is, uh, the District One appointee for pork commission. Uh, it's a big loss, Pat was a good guy, he was a, a very successful, uh, brilliant, uh, resident in our community and, uh, I had a conversation Friday night with David Carter, who's also on the pork commission, and David said, well, it's gonna be a really hard spot to fit and it is. He, he asked the right questions and he had a lot of experience, so, uh, I pray for his family during coming week. And that, uh, again, Merry Christmas to everybody, Merry Christmas to our employees and their families and Happy Holidays and look forward to moving forward in twenty-four. That concludes my report.
Bye, Wes.
All right, um, where are we at on Robbins Lake with the call situation?
We're waiting on the airport to finish up, wrap up their runway project. Sue them all.
Sue them all at the same time?
Yeah, you got, you got nine different efficiencies and, and you get it.
Okay.
There's nothing that would prevent us, other than our cash balances, and go ahead and get that project complete, especially with the heat. And I was thinking, starting to go on.
And, and weather now?
We, we'd ask Abby when, come around January, it's gonna be pretty difficult.
Okay, oh, the, all the stuff that's going on in plantation, mobile home park, wa- water being cut off out there, uh, and trash not being picked up, uh, did you make contact with any, anybody with that entity?
I asked, talked to their attorney and he said he's gonna reach out to them, talk to them and, uh, he said he did, but then he reached, gave me the number as well to contact and it's the same person that you and I talked to, so I can call him up and try to dig what's going on. You know, landlords are supposed to supply these type of things, supposed to give water and pick up trash, that your place is habitable and that's part of your implied responsibilities, that's your responsibility as a landlord. Are we the regulatory board for that? Not necessarily, but we certainly, like we did with Carter, we should reach out and say this needs to be dealt with. I did talk to the water company, the water company said, no, it's not us, it's, it's, they know what it's about and you about, their water lines aren't that good, they're leaking and that's bad.
Man, we ain't up there three on my side.
Yeah, not, not trying to be cryptic about that, but the, the, they got all kinds of water leaks out there, the guy keeps sending the water off to residents, uh, for days and days at a time, uh, during the holidays and, and also I understand maybe the trash hadn't been picked up and I don't know who he contracted to pick that trash up out there in plantation mobile home park, but, uh, he has to pay for it, so if he's not paying him, maybe that's why it's not getting picked up, but I don't know these things, but we're just trying to, we got some residents that are complaining and I, I understand their complaints, uh.
Uh, hold on, so Scott, we, we passing paper ground about PPR and wondering, is that a violation of the health and safety or whatever the case may be? Now, when you don't get drinking water, when you don't have running water, you violating whatever you say is being violated when you don't, when you don't, uh, allow people to get water.
Yeah, I totally agree with you on that, however, the way the statute's listed, there's only, it's only viol- it's not just anything that violates the health and safety, it's a list of things that, that may violate the health and safety that we can go and fix. I don't know drinking.
I ain't saying it's gonna fix it, but, but he need to be notified.
No, I totally agree with that and he's, the process of him notifying saying, look, this isn't right, it's been done. I can look and see if there's any other.
Oh, yeah, I've already notified, I know you probably notified, but have he been legally notified in black and white?
Not, well, in an email, he certainly has as well as.
Nah, he needs something in black and white, you have to.
Well, it's more you've been notified to the, the deficiencies.
Not, not to get my business, we're, I'm representing a plaintiff suing them on something else and so I couldn't just reach out and call guy, I had to get permission from their attorney first.
Okay, uh, going back a couple of months here, a, a gentleman stood before us about, um, they were gonna supply us with dirt for Carthage Point Road, um, in lieu of, we let them park, these particular landowners park on a piece of property that we have, and we had a contract spelled out that effect and, and what happened with that? 'Cause it's not, it hasn't ever been, um, completed, has it?
No, they didn't like the broadness of the contract and that's perfectly fine. Actually talked to the doctor yesterday, I think it's been Saturday, and I told him that I already am getting with Robbie on that project, if I can get a scope of that project and give it back to Smith and see, you know, whether that's something they agree on and I think it's something they would agree on, 'cause it's not. But no, they didn't sign it, so they can't lay down our, our parking lot.
Oh, well, it, it's pretty important to us to get it done before, you know, the river comes up and then blows the road out and that we don't have any dirt to put down there, it's gonna cost us a lot of money, all dirt down there, so, uh, I just wanna follow that up.
I've not delayed on that project, we're not, we're got funding and we need to know what's the scope of work on that.
Yeah, we got the funding that come from Washington, whatever the five hundred thousand, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna meet down there this week, somebody and look at it and see and talk about raising that little part of some and then.
So it won't continue, keep blowing down like that?
Then they try to get the rid of that put on.
Okay, um, I, I believe that's all I had, uh, I wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year holiday season and please everybody be safe and courteous. Thanks.
Um, let's see, I have the November meal report from the Sheriff's Department.
You heard the request, uh, the deputy clerk and, and do of the chancellor clerk? Proper, proper move by Supervisor Wilson. Set proper second by Supervisor Hudson. Would there be any discussion?
Is it up and down or is it the same? I'll talk to you.
Uh, if there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by you who sign a aye. Any opposed, may they have a say right most carried now.
Um, let's see, I have the November tax redemption settlement, just wrote across the minutes.
You heard the request, uh, the deputy clerk? The proper move by Supervisor Gray, proper second by Supervisor Hudson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you who sign a aye. Any opposed, may they have a say right most carried now.
And I have a modification from Core Civic, um, it looks like it's in the obligate excess funds and closeout of this contract is what it's for.
You heard the request, uh, the deputy clerk, can I get a motion? The proper move by Supervisor Hudson? Proper second by Supervisor Wilson now, would there be any discussion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, uh, Mr. League of Man, have you reviewed that?
I've not seen that.
Okay, man, I ain't, I I can't vote on that till.
All right.
Oh, it hasn't been reviewed?
You gotta review that.
Yes. We 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 got a motion on the floor, I got a motion on the floor, then we'll see what we, uh, do, because I know. Wes, okay, but we're seeing her, she was sending her, uh, motion, so we had, we had, you were sending your second, we're sending the second. I mean, that's, that's, yeah, I said, that's that's the same time we were doing, that's the same time.
We we do it, but at this point, man, I ain't.
Who who on that?
All right.
Wait, wait, the gentleman sent a motion, do you, okay.
Pendant.
Just wait, she was sending.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, you were sending, he was sending, and then Scott looks over and and you go ahead and vote on that.
All right, so we have an unclaimed body, and, uh, we have an invoice from, this has been mortuary on four hundred ninety dollars to have been prepared.
All right, you heard the request of the deputy clerk? Has been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly second by, uh, Supervisor Wilson, that's right. Would there be any discussion, if there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now.
And I have my, uh, certificate, um, from the Mississippi, uh, Torque Claims Board, to be spread across the minutes.
All right, you heard the request of the deputy clerk? Can I get a motion, been properly moved by Supervisor, uh, Gray, and properly second by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right.
And a rule of mortuary bonds.
Hello, you heard the request, um, deputy clerk has been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly second by Supervisor Hudson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now.
And that is.
Yeah, you give me a couple items to.
Yes.
For for bringing, the first is Department of Revenue has a loss tax certificate, which is for home unit applications, um, I need a motion to have it approved.
You heard the.
Look for it, it's done, fill out the Department of Revenue, so.
You heard the request of the attorney? Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly second by Supervisor Hudson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now.
At a previous meeting, we had increased the salary of, of Chalkine based on, previously what we talked to you about and so forth. This is a budget that addresses the cost of increasing that that amount, that amount.
So, you asking for a budget, man?
Yes.
All right, well, you heard the request, uh, the attorney?
It's the sign my brains, if you get, um, presenting.
Yeah, it's been properly moved by who, who, Gray, and second by Hudson. All in favor vote, any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now.
Now, just think this has been, has been the, uh, grant facilitator of that cleanup grant, and it's better for us, for them, not to be the county just to facilitate itself, we previously talked about it. They did send over a grant agreement that would make us the opponents for it, I would like approval, but I would like it pending legal approval, I just haven't had a chance to go through it yet, so we can approve the contract pending legal approval.
You heard the request of the attorney? Can I get a motion?
A motion.
They're properly moved by Supervisor Gray. Can I get a second? Proper second by Supervisor Milton, would there be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now.
Corvette sent me a text saying that Reeds Across America this year was, is set for December sixteenth, uh, that's what that celebration's done, if y'all wanna.
At what time?
Attend to it, you know, sometimes we've done resolutions or whatever, but if y'all wanna attend, so, usually the county hasn't been.
December the sixteenth?
Yes, ma'am, that's what she sent me. I was there last year.
Yeah.
Mr. President, if you can be there, that.
I was there last year, I went for West, maybe West, don't, me, he did, he was on the, Reeds well there.
Need the resolution.
She last year was a family Christmas, so.
December sixteen?
I understand, December sixteen.
I like to make a res- I'd like to, uh, make a motion for a resolution.
I understand. It's been properly moved by, uh, Supervisor Hudson, properly second by Supervisor Milton, uh, can it be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried, that didn't matter. That push kind of show up in the hot door, I just don't, most people ain't gonna do it, so, I I I work on a survey out here this year. Survey that, all right? All in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right, all right, Scott?
And did we do the, we proved it on grant?
Oh, yeah.
We did the resolution for that, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, I could.
All right, so.
And I got an idea to turn.
So what are you gonna do, you gonna go back and approve this, uh, did you look over?
I'm almost done, I think it's gonna be fine.
All right, all right, well, where we go? Uh, approve travel for, uh, Corvette to Sheridan Refuge, January twenty-third to twenty-fifth, that's our Corvette making this, can I get a motion?
Don't move.
The Sheridan Refuge, same thing that we did just.
For Clem.
Yeah, same thing we did for Clem, let me refuge over there, uh, the 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 concert. Yeah.
They sent something, they're gonna send something, actually.
Yeah, we let it, we let them go, and we need to stop and rest, my man, y'all, y'all, I thought y'all already wrote on us. No, that, you know, concerts, nothing, they don't, I mean, no, they don't pay for, we, I mean, then, if we get, then, oh, then we gonna go out, we gonna go out there. And we all ready out there. Supervisor Gray made motion, uh, Supervisor Wilson, Wilson already said. Oh, approve of travel, yeah, Corvette to the. All in favor, when we had a discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now. Supervisor Gray and Supervisor Wilson. All right, so I got something on here, pay rate in these sheets look like it. This is apartment one oh four. Jalen Johnson's up, get, I asked him, one oh four is a tax collector, so, they said thirty-five thousand, I don't know, I don't have. One, I put the apartment one oh four, so she said tax collector, so I don't know.
You gotta wait, is it in the budget?
I have no idea.
We gonna be able to do it when.
I have no idea.
He can wait.
This is like a six month.
Nah, they.
They don't have none, I don't know.
She's, she's who? I mean, she's been there five, five years now.
So we doing some, I think, I.
I don't even see with our audio radios here, what she's making now, what it's going from.
I asked Terrence if they want it, to see if they can go or ask our executive session.
It's definitely a best down.
Apartment is.
Yeah, and and we hadn't even got Brendan, he need to be there, so, we got this, so, you know, I wanna say, uh, uh, it's been a rough year as president. And so I'm glad the presidency's over, because I, I, you know, we'll be good, we still a little lumpy, but I think we still have a little problem up here, because I get, and my, and my nerves bad, my patience is short sometimes, because I I and I feel like some of the things, I I don't wanna be contradictory, I but I gotta be straight out about something, I'm saying this to me and everybody else. Heard Supervisor Gray say something earlier, he said, we need a plan and write it down, I mean, um, just coincidentally, uh, last, last week, I was at home, everybody know I missed the meeting, I had, um, oral surgery done, one of the things that I wrote down to change on next year was to, not next year, as, because I don't worry about next year, because next year is not coming, but when I was writing down goals, one of my goals that I wrote down was to be, serve my county better, was to research better and do a better job. You know, and I kept hearing, hearing things, I don't wanna put anybody on, 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 on a spot, so I won't direct this to anybody. I keep hearing, we said we don't have a plan, from talking to me and Clu, we do have a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we got a plan, but, but, but our plans are being presented individual to people, and not being brought across the board, because, um, we have, all of us have certain things, but if we work what we got in place, it's thing that we are coming here, and I'll say this, if you look back at our first three years, our first three years, it was, wasn't as much trial, we got a lot of stuff accomplished in here, but in the last year, I'm included, all of us, we done had more bickering and division up here on this board than ever. And I don't need to keep talking about it, and I'm not trying to point fingers at nobody, but if you don't bring the problem out and address the problem, you can't get it, uh, 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 fixed, so I'm not just saying anything to any of my other board members that I'm not saying to myself. We gotta do a better job, we all elected to serve people, they elected to serve people in each district, that's why it's five districts. But we also have administrators, we have attorneys, we have managed people, we have role managers, get all come up. I'm not gonna say what, and and say anything to any of my colleagues, but what I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna try to do a better job on myself, to make sure we communicate everything together and try to move forward in this year, but just because it's been rough at the end, that doesn't know mean we gotta start like that in the beginning. So I I I would like to say that, uh, I lost a lot of, uh, good friends, and, uh, one of the fellows that worked with me for about fifteen years, Mr. Sims, and I know a lot of families, so I hate to get to calling names, but, uh, my condolences goes out to everybody who's lost loved ones, and it is the Christmas season, and, you know, always through Christmas season, things do happen, so I would ask everybody for the, be safe as you can, and I wish everybody here a Merry Christmas, and, uh, hopefully all of us and our families be safe through the Christmas holiday. Need a motion for. Yeah.
This friend, this is okay, would it adjust pricing of parking down here with the others?
That's on Core Civic.
So I need a motion to approve the Core Civic contract. They're properly moved by, um, Supervisor Hudson, and properly second by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now. Terrence, you got, you got a employee in here, that, you got a piece of paper, you asking for a raise?
No, um, so she, she did the, um, certification program at the, you know, Mississippi State Office, and so each certification, each time they get certified, they get an increase, uh, through Mississippi State with their pay, and she told me to test their pay and move on with their, their certification.
Is it long there? Well, we didn't get the certification paperwork attached to it.
Oh, she didn't send, okay, okay, yes, I sent it to, um, Ms. Sharon, but I'll print that real quick, and.
That's what, she automatically gets.
Yeah, they get it from the state, some, it comes from the state, and I think the state's in the funding board or something like that, I don't.
Yeah, well, that's why, we 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 appreciate it, and that's why a lot of time we got courses like that, and, you know, I know y'all been, a lot of time you got courses like that, you get a chance, try to ease over here, and that way, we, you know, we would have held you up. I held somebody up that deserted the two certifications and passed it, because we didn't have an answer for it.
I got it.
But we thank you.
All right, so, let me print that out for everybody.
Yeah, so I would now need a motion to approve. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, and properly second by Supervisor Hudson, would that be in a discussion?
Yes, uh, I, the question I gotta ask, can't be out, because the administrator ain't here, and, uh, when they was doing their budget, did they put it in there, because, uh, I don't know, since I've been here, and I don't, I don't know nothing about it, so, um, uh, that is, so.
Nah.
What you got?
I I'm good, I'm good.
So.
I'm good.
We're getting, you, so, would, I don't know, so is it state required, uh?
State required, you get that certification, so.
All right, so, uh, okay, so, uh, any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right motion carried now.
You're on?
Yeah. We had a lot of discussion, I'll do a.
You you, but is that the session?
I need a motion for close termination. They're properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, properly second by Supervisor Milton, would there be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor by you to sign a I, and Paul May had the same right. Will be it.